I would like to call the January twenty fifth, twenty twenty two Board of Supervisors Meeting to order. Could we all stand for the invocation? Well, it's grace and heavenly father, once again, we come before you asking for your blessings. Heavenly fathers, we look upon tonight, asking us to continue to guide us that we may do the best work for the citizens of Caroline County. Heavenly Father, as the world sits in turmoil, we ask for your divine intervention. With wars on our borders, wars across the country, wars across the nation. Give us strength, give us guidance, give us resolve. We give all thanks and all blessings to you. Amen. Pledge allegiance, please, Dan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Opening board comments, Mr. Forehand.
None, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Forehand, Mr. Black.
Yeah, I just have a few. First of all, I just want to reiterate again, the polar bear plunge is coming up on Saturday, February twelfth, so we're excited. We're very much excited for that, so look forward to having a big crowd out there. And if you know a plunger, my mic is not working.
Your light's on, maybe it's volume.
Can you hear me now?
No.
Hello? It's a little better?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So the polar bear plunge, sorry about that. The polar bear plunge is Saturday, February twelfth, so we look forward to that. And we believe it's Caroline's biggest fundraiser. So we look forward to seeing everyone. The second part is something that is kind of very hard for me is probably about, I don't know, four or five years ago now, maybe even longer than that, six, seven. We had Mr. Gary Dudley come in front of us, and he was opening Caroline County's first winery in my district on Lady Smith Road. I got to know Gary very, very well and later appointed him to the planning commission. Last Saturday, we got the news that Gary passed away, so it's been very, very hard. Gary was a great planning commission member, a great citizen of the county, was very good with business, so it was very, very shocking, so condolences to his family. He's a great friend, so that's it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. My condolences as well. Mr. Sealy?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy. Mrs. Long?
I have none.
Thank you, Mrs. Long. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, I do have a few, if I may add, my condolences to Mr. Black and the family. The General Assembly is in session now, and I think most of us know it, or at least aware of it, there's a couple of bills I think that would negatively impact localities, which the Board and citizenship be aware of. One, one in particular would affect the tax rates that counties are allowed to charge. The other is a concern that we've had for quite some time, and some things the General Assembly is planning to do, which include tax cuts. Sometimes those tax cuts at the state level pass down the services that are required to locality, so it may seem like a tax cut for the House of Delegates and the State Senate, but then the responsibilities on the locality, so we're going to pay particular attention to those. The other is I, I know there's been quite a bit of action at school board meetings. I was sad to hear that someone had to be arrested at a school board meeting for threats they made, and I just wanted to say that I'm going to support our school board in whatever decision they make for the health and safety of our students. So I do appreciate the hard work they're doing there. And last, I forgot, but I don't do cold, as it's well known, and I don't intend to do cold ever, so I'm going to, I'm going to try to make a donation for Mr. Black and the polar bear plunge. I meant to bring a check today, but we do have another meeting, so I'll make that at our next meeting, if you will remind me, I'll make sure I do it. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I only have one comment, and it's Charlie's not beginning. You know, often, you know, we say the pledge of allegiance, and usually it's kind of just words sometimes, but I would encourage everyone to sit down and read the words of the pledge of allegiance, because it says that together we can do almost anything, and divided, we're always going to have issue. And we do the pledge of allegiance to say that we support this United States of America. With all the things that we question, there's a way to always to question, always a way to make sure that we show respect and ensure that dignity is part of what we do. So I would encourage all of us as citizens of the United States and citizens of Caroline County to make sure that we always conduct ourselves as responsible citizens, and that's my comment, thank you. Amendments to the agenda? Mr. Forehand?
The only thing I'm, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Under appointments, the Rec Advisory Committee, I'm not ready for that, I haven't found the right person.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a-
Mr. Black.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Black, open comments?
No, no amendments to the agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sealy.
I'd like to make an amendment that we go into closed session before the seven, before the seven thirty session, so if we could do that right after the consent agenda.
Okay. Mrs. Long?
I have none.
Mr. Thomas?
One with respect to an agenda item that's already on here, we are going to talk about the housing grant for Habitat on the eleventh, and I'd mentioned at our last meeting, we talked about some sort of stopgap funding for them to make sure they include, they at least keep the staff that they have, since they didn't get a grant before, so if that could be part of the discussion, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, so you want us to just add that to it to make sure it's included?
Just, just make sure we include that as part of item eleven.
Okay. So not necessarily a amendment-
It's not a new item.
A new item, just here we talk about funding. All right, anything else, Mr. Thomas?
That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Then, agenda item number six should be removed from the agenda, it's been deferred, and so we will take that up at a later meeting, so we will defer item number six. It will not be covered tonight. Without any additions or subtractions, can I get a motion to-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We're going to address seven, but not six?
Yes.
Okay.
They only pulled number six, item number six.
Well, did we, we didn't pull it, we got a request-
Request for deferral.
So we have to act, act on that request for deferral? So we can't, we can't pull it, we just get to six and accept a deferral?
Okay. Is that right, Mr. County Attorney?
Ben is saying yes.
Yeah, that's fine, when you get to that, that item, you can just indicate that at the request of the applicant, it's being deferred.
Thank you. All right, so the only, only amendment to the agenda until we get to item number seven is the closed session that we will have after the consent agenda.
I believe that's true, and I'll make that motion.
There's a motion that we accept the agenda as amended. There's a second by Mrs. Long, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. First on the agenda is a report from Marlene Jala from the Meadow Event Park regarding their annual review. Good evening, Ms. Jala.
Good evening to all of you, and thank you all for a few minutes just to highlight how our 2021 ended up, and most of what I'll highlight you had in your board packets. And as always, once I hit a few more notes and add some information, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer. So after coming out of a very rough 2020 with the pandemic and being virtually shut down in many regards, we ended up in 2021 coming back very strong and ended up with over 500,000 visitors to the Meadow Event Park, which for us was a new record. And even more amazing, I think, actually, I control the slides, don't I? Maybe? Got it. All right, here we go. So we had over 500,000 visitors, and what's even more astounding about that is that the first quarter of 2021, we were really still in the pandemic stage, and we had, I think, two indoor events in the Farm Bureau Center. In a normal year, we would have added another 40,000 to 45,000 people to that number. So that's a very strong number, we're very proud of it. Numbers aren't the whole story, but they certainly make a difference, and especially going from having such a drastic improvement over the year prior. I like for people to understand the big picture, and that is that forty-three percent of that number relates to the State Fair of Virginia, and twenty percent came from the new after-hours concert series. So sixty-three percent of our visitors really came from those two events, roughly, if you count the fair and the number of concerts, forty days. And interestingly enough, we had, we had a great, strong year for facility rentals and partnerships, but the State Fair still comprises about eighty percent of our annual income, so that, again, tells you how important those ten days are. And fortunately for us, we had ten days of sunshine. Fair attendance, we hit about 215,000, which, you know, in a year, in September, we were, we were back in the discussions about the variant, and the pandemic was resurging in areas, so we're lucky that we were able to have that event and have the success that we did with it. It was all the way around, we just did the basics, and it was very successful from a financial standpoint. We just finished the illuminate car show. The, the big growth last year was because that was something people could do in a car, and we had 50,000 cars. So overall, it's, if you look at the average from 2014, so that event now has been going on seven years, last year helped raise the average from about 22,000 up to 26,500, and this year's count was around 30,000 cars, so they had a great year. We still look pretty much the same at the bottom as January, and as, as you see, things, the green represents 2021. We had, I mean, the green is 2021, yes, so compared back to 2019, we had a slow start to the year, but then build up through, into the summer and into fall, our event schedule really took off like crazy. We measure event days, that's a day for each event, so if we had five things going on on our property on the same weekend, that's five event days. That also grew to 370, and that's a new record. One of the things that I'm most proud of, that I think is very important, and we've learned that over the last two years, and that is, we need to, we need to have a variety of stakeholders in our property. We can't just be about one type of rental or one type of event, because if we are and something happens to that segment and, and goes away, then we're, you know, we've got a chunk of business that will go away with it. So we had a good variety in 2021, you know, lots of new pieces landed at the Meadow Event Park. Part of that is because I think our brand in the region is strong, and some county and city and governmental tied facilities were still partially in shutdown mode, so we just kept landing things that had to move from other locations, and they've stayed. I'm very excited to share that in 2023, in June, we landed another national event, and the Meadow Event Park has been selected as the site for the 50th anniversary of the BMW Motorcycle Owners Rally. That event moves across the United States, it's a big deal, it's about 6,000 people, probably two or 3,000 bikes, and will take the entire north part of the facility for a three-day weekend. They love Caroline County, they love the roadways, they love the backroads, they love the access to the coast, to DC, so again, our location really has paid off for a very large event. One thing I'm very proud of, that I put into numbers for you all, is, you know, what do we do directly to impact finances in this county? So I did some work last week, that number is at 525,000. Now that's, you know, that was me researching in a day where we've, where we spent money on companies that we pay to do services at the park, people we pay that live in Caroline County, and utilities, payments for sales taxes, taxes, transient occupancy tax, the food and beverage tax, and that number that, that you see is our number, that doesn't include any of, any of the other events we're at the meadows. So I'm very proud of that and want folks to really understand what our direct impact is fiscally on the county. I want to thank the county economic development folks for splitting the cost of a welcome sign at Gate One, which we constructed just before the concert series started. Looks really good, and as you can see on there, it features the county logo. I get a lot of questions, and we get a lot of feedback with, especially the concert series, because the fair has been around long enough that we know our record, we, we've had no security issues, and, you know, last year, as, as things kind of progressed, you know, questions about what we do for safety, or who's doing what, state police or county. I looked on from our financials, and I wanted you all to understand that we spend a solid 27% of our expense budget in the area of safety and security, and we do that because it's a very important piece of how we operate, and it's important that we operate safely and successfully, as do our partners. Really, last year for the State Fair, we had no major security incidents, and one outflow on one night, for some reason, we got, we had some backlog in one of our parking areas. Just real quickly, I wanted to mention two things that we are starting to look at, and we know that we're short on restroom facilities, especially during State Fair Week, so we're looking, going to take a hard look at the main gate and how it's designed, how, how we welcome people, and we need to double or triple our restroom facilities for folks in that area. We're also finally, and thankfully, looking hard at a permanent maintenance structure that, off to the right of that, of course, is Route Thirty, the main gate two, and the blue arrow points to the maintenance shop area. I don't know that we'll get any of that off the ground this year, but we're certainly, the Farm Bureau Board has agreed to let me move ahead to start trying to look at plans and, and determine what's possible, so hopefully, within the next two years, we can accomplish some major moves forward with those two. We have a spring event that is on the books again, the Farm Festival, that's turning into a really great event, I think, for us, and I think it will grow and become a nice anchor in the spring. We are still doing some secretariat activities, although we don't have in-person tours back running quite yet. We're in discussions with the family, continued discussions on the license structure for our property. The, the last piece of, of data and numbers was, I wanted to make sure that we tracked and could track the impressions for when Caroline County was included in our State Fair ads, because I know over the past few years, there have been lots of questions and discussion about that. So either the logo or referring to our State Fair and references saying, "and Caroline County, Virginia," the number of impressions on the State Fair ads alone was 3,200-plus thousand. If at any point you ever need any, you know, a little bit more description of that, or an image of how that was done, I have those and would be happy to share. And I think the other thing, this is the front of our State Fair website with the county seal and a link, and that stays at the bottom throughout the year. And the other thing that I'm really proud of, that I really hope people understand is, I knew when I saw the logo in the top that had the after-hours concerts at the Meadow Event Park early in the year, I thought, this is really going to give our brand and our facility the foothold in this market that we deserve, and the image, and it's going to raise our brand tenfold, and I would easily say it's done that. So I thought it was important to see, you know, what did they do in the market advertising wise that had our name on it, and that's the 98 million plus impressions. Now, impressions are like many things we measure, what does that really mean? Some impressions are stronger than others, but it basically means that in front of people in some form of advertising, that logo, the mention of the concerts, hit 98 million. So I think that is, that's an impressive figure, and I ask also to understand a little bit more about where people come from. Nine percent were from a 50-mile radius, three percent were out of state, and then the other piece of that was within a 50-mile radius of the property. So I think that kind of shows, you know, and not only was, it was not easy to get that off the ground, but it certainly made an impression to people in the market and helped our brand and our name. I think that's the last slide, so I'll go back to that, and I want to thank you all for the support you, you give our property, to all of the, your county team that help us do what we do, and, you know, educate us on things that we need to improve on, and we really have great working relationships, and we appreciate that. We're starting off 2022, the weather hasn't been easy, so we've had half of an event and one canceled, and have a full-fledged, very nice, large trade show this weekend, and a full calendar in the making, so thank you all, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Jala. Floyd, I'll start with you, if you have any.
Sure, I, I just had a question regarding the revenue you said the county got?
Uh huh.
I don't have the page number, but I'm looking at it. It was 525,000, and you said there was 246,000 for the county with respect to taxes, utilities, permits, and security? And I think security is paid to the sheriff or-
Correct, so if officers work in a, at the Meadow Event Park, that, that's, we, that does not include the concert series either, that's, that would be my portion that we pay for gun shows, part of the fair.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's going to them directly. Do you have what the, what the taxes would be and the utility payments would be?
I can, I'm happy to, I did not bring that with me, but I've got the breakout, and I can send that.
Yeah, if you could just mail that to us?
I would be happy.
Email, I'm sorry.
Yep.
All right, thank you, that's all.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mrs. Long?
I just wanted to say, hey, thank you for continuing to do such a nice job, and we're glad to see that the numbers were up this year. I also want to say that this year I took my grandkids to the light show after Christmas, and that was so much easier, because that is very popular, but they, and they thoroughly enjoyed it, and I wish you good weather for this coming year at the fair, because it certainly was wonderful last year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Long, Mr. Sealy.
I spent three days at the State Fair this year and, and was just astounded at the attendance, so I will say that, and the flow, the way the fair is laid out, I think, has really facilitated the crowd moving through. I had a number of people comment on the after-hours concerts that went, that live in my district, and couldn't believe they only had to drive 14 miles or so to go to a concert, and really did enjoy it, so I know a number of folks- So I know a number of folks that live at least in my district or in the county attended that and were really, really happy to be able to drive to something so close, so congratulations on that.
Thank you, Mrs. Sealy. Mr. Black.
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate what Mr. Sealy said, that there's a lot of people that live in the western part of the county that were very happy that they could go to some of these concerts and only be, you know, 10 miles, 15 miles away, so that was really nice. And on a personal note, we would like to, from the Rorican Club, we would like to really, really thank you for your generous donation to the, to the Polar Bear Plunge. That's, that's something that's a huge event in this county every single year, and it goes to a lot of different charities, so thank you for that donation, thank you for being part of the community. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Mr. Forehand?
Just a couple of quick ones. Is the concert series coming back for 2022?
Well, it'll be on your agenda February 8th.
Okay.
To be discussed. They have filed a festival permit and their intent is, you know, and our hope is that we address, you know, a few of the issues. Last year was kind of a mad scramble for them to move dates out of 2020 into 2021 when things could start opening up. So we're trying to work on some concerns about the number of concerts in a row and sound, and so yes, we hope it's part of our future.
Thank you. Also, the list of activities, and we attended two wrestling tournaments, youth wrestling tournaments at the facility, and I'm happy to see that another one's on the schedule for the end of February. And talking with those people, even folks that were, that were all over the East Coast, the first event that was there li, early last year, it was, it was refreshing, that people said, this is a great facility, the, the food, there were people there to staff the food, there was plenty of space, the parking was good, weather was poor, but it worked out great. So you made an impression, the facility made an impression for all the folks that attended that, so I want to, I want to thank you for that. And that was one other thing that slipped my mind, so it must not have been important. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forehand. Ms. Joll, what, what I particularly am proud of is the fact that you're always available. I think probably last year, we maybe, I would dare say, talked maybe 50 to 100 times, I'm sure, about different things going on. So I do appreciate that, and the fact that when there is a problem, there's a conversation. We may not get to the bottom of it, but there is a conversation, and we begin to work on it immediately. So you don't see that often, you don't see people respond in the manner in which you have. So certainly, I want to say thank you, because it's in my district and it affects a lot of my folks, and they call, or they call you, and there's always a response, never so-so, we'll deal with it later. It's always addressed immediately, so that I certainly thank you and look forward to our conversation on February the 8th. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you all, and I'll follow up with that information tomorrow.
All right. Thank you. Have a good evening. Next on the agenda are the appointments for committees in the county, the advisory, Recreation Advisory Committee, they're...
That's been pulled.
Been pulled, yeah. And then the Board of Zoning Appeals, Port Royal, Western Carolina, and Madison.
Mr. Underwood, I would like to go ahead and recommend Jimmy Street for Board of Zoning Appeals for the Port Royal District.
Jimmy Street, fine.
To clarify, Mr. Chairman, and I've neglected to put this in the memo, what you're doing is making recommendations to the Circuit Court.
Right.
For those appointments.
Okay. I think you did. Mr. Black?
Yes, I'd like to recommend Sharon Vikstrom.
And Mr. Forehand?
I'd like to recommend Mr. Dave Rababi.
And from the Commonwealth's Attorney, he has asked that Taylor Calhoun be considered for the position in lieu of him being reappointed, so we would nominate him to the Circuit Court as well. If there, I'm sorry, Mrs. Calhoun.
I would say, do you need a motion?
Yeah, so I, I'll give you all the names.
Second that.
Okay. Miss Taylor Calhoun. So I need a motion for the appointments to the Board of Zoning Appeals, I'm, excuse me, to send it to the Circuit Court for approval, as well as the rappahannic area on aging. Again, for the Board of Zoning, it's Mr. Street, Ms. Vikstrom, and Mr. Rababi, and then for the Area Alcohol Safety Action Program is Ms. Calhoun.
Second.
Second.
There's a motion and proper second that we send these names to Circuit Court. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we will go into closed session. Mr. Black, if you will read the, oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm, I'm moving too fast. Let's go ahead and do the consent agenda first. Is there any issue or concern with the three items on the consent agenda that you wish to discuss? Anyone? Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and proper second that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, Mr. Black, if you will read the closed session.
Yep, I move that this board convene in a closed meeting pursuant to the consultation with legal counsel and contract exemptions of Section 2.23711A8 and 829 of the Code of Virginia for consultation with a county attorney and discussion with staff regarding specific legal matters associated with pending solar applications and the negotiating of related project siting agreements, where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the county's bargaining position or negotiating strategy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and proper second that we go into closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now in closed session. We should be back probably 45 minutes, I would think, so, and then we'll go right to public comments and then into public hearings. Thank you.
I move that the Caroline County Board of Supervisors certify that to each, to the best of each board member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which this certification applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
Second.
There's a motion that we come out of closed session, proper second, all on paper, say aye?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries. Mr. Forehand, do you so certify?
I so certify.
Mr. Black, you so certify?
I so certify.
Mrs. Sealy, you so certify?
Mr. Chairman, I so certify.
Mrs. Long, you so certify?
I certify.
Mr. Thomas, you so certify?
I so certify.
And I so certify as well. Next on the agenda is public comment. The public comment period is, the purpose of this is to give the citizens or anyone who wishes to speak regarding any matter within the county that is not on the upper public hearing today within the next sixty days. The public will have three minutes to speak regarding any matter. We ask you to give us your name and your magistrateal voting district only, not your address. Remarks should be made only to the board and not to the staff. All comments should focus on the matter at hand. Again, each speaker should clearly state his or her name, voting district. At this time, public comment period is now open. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Or is there anyone who'd like to speak during public comment?
Good evening, board members, staff. I'm Ray Sheeble, Port Royal District. I may be out of order, but I'm sure you'll let me know if I am. On the back table of the January eleventh meeting, I picked up this proposed letter. I'm led to believe there are changes. My boy, is it jacked up. I will address my findings and my concerns at the next hearing that you have on this. I'm sure that everybody will have a copy then so I can go over what I have found and what the concerns are.
Is this regarding the public hearing, or?
No, this is my comments.
Thank you, sir.
All right. I don't think you've had a public hearing on this yet.
Mr. Sheeble, is this on the board's rules of order?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, since it's a proposal, I would imagine that there are changes somewhere. Anyhow, I will address my, my findings and my concerns. But it'll, it'll take me longer than the three minutes. Anyhow, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I can't see it. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during public comment?
Yes, sir. My name is Everett Green, and I'm from the Madison District, and I want to speak on the solar.
That's, this is a public comment. The solar hearing will be during the public hearing. This is anything that's not a public hearing tonight, you can, you have to wait till later to speak about solar.
Later tonight?
Yes, right after this. We'll go through each one.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding any of this, any of the matter? This is a public comment, not public hearing at this time. Is there anyone who'd like to speak during public comment? Finally, is there anyone who'd like to speak during public comments? Seeing and hearing none, public comment is now closed. Next on the agenda, we will move to public hearings. First on the agenda is special exception zero five twenty twenty one. Mr. Fincham, are you handling this? This is Racehorse Solar LLC.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Your first public hearing is S V E X zero five dash twenty twenty one. John Berberich, owner, Racehorse Solar LLC applicant. Requesting a special exception permit in accordance with Article seventeen, Section thirteen, and Article four, Section five point forty of the Caroline County zoning ordinance. On tax map numbers thirty nine dash A dash ten and thirty nine A dash twelve, consisting of approximately one hundred and forty five point nine acres. The property is located on Route six thirty two, approximately one and a half miles west of the intersection of U.S. Route one in the Port Royal Voting District. The twenty thirty comprehensive plan designates this property as rural preservation. If you will recall, you actually had the staff report and public hearing and the initial public hearing at your last meeting. The board continued that public hearing to tonight's meeting to allow anybody who did not have, was not able to make the public hearing at previous meeting the opportunity to address the board tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Fincham. So this is a continuation of our January eleventh public hearing. Due to the weather, we had a number of people who wanted to speak who were not able to make the meeting. So is the applicant here tonight? You have any, come forward, you have any comments at this time? Other than the ones you made last time, hopefully you don't give me the same.
Comments getting to the deep build the project would remain the same. It's thanks to people who speak here today and have the opportunity to respond.
You'll, you'll get an opportunity to respond.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, again, so the public hearing for special exception zero five twenty twenty one is open. Is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Please come forward. Please state your name and voting district. Name and voting district.
I don't know the name of the district.
Okay.
My name is Tamara Cannon.
Cannon?
Cannon, C A N N O N.
Thank you.
And I support this project because I think it better for our atmosphere or economy and our electric bills and we're using from the sun and not taking our elements out of her and burning it off and hurting the atmosphere. And I think it's better for the county all the way around. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes.
I gotta say, my name is Everett Green, and I'm from the Madison District, and I want to speak about the solar. I purchased solar in two thousand and twenty, and they didn't tell me the truth about it. And they didn't, not live enough to what they say to come to inspect it. They'd never been out. I went without power just last week with the snowstorm. My batteries lasted about three, four hours. Nobody been there to check it out. And my, they told me I would be saving money on my power bill. I haven't saved a dime. My, I paid solar a hundred and ninety six dollars a month, and they tell me I got to pay that for the next three hundred months. So that's about twenty years. And then I'm still paying Rapper Hennick two, three hundred dollars a month. So I'm paying over five hundred dollars a month or six hundred dollars a month for power now. And they just didn't live up to the standards, what they said. And they told me I was saving money on my power bill. Tax purposes, they told me I could get maybe fourteen hundred dollars tax break. I'd never seen it last year in two thousand and twenty. This year coming up, and the solar is not working. If anybody remember that in nineteen seventy nine, we started solar in the state of Virginia. It didn't work. They took it out. Now we back at the solar again, it's not working. If your batteries go down, you don't, like, I got a battery backup. When batteries go down, you don't have no sun for a week or two, you don't have no backup power. The batteries go down, put the charger. You don't have no sunlight to charge your batteries. You got to have a backup generator, so you just rather not have solar. And that's my comment about the solar power. The solar is no good. If anybody says good, it's, they're wrong. I worked on solar years ago. They used to use it for trying to heat water. If your batteries die, you can't heat water. You got to have some kind of source to power them batteries back up. My batteries went dead. I went, this week, well, during the storm, snowstorm, I went five, six days without power. My batteries lasted three, four hours. They lasted, went off. I didn't have nothing. I lost my refrigerator, lost all my food. My, my house insurance said two thousand dollars deductible.
Ms. Green, can you wrap up, please?
Who?
Can you wrap up, please?
I'm finished.
That's all. If you have anything else to say, I don't want to cut you off. All right, thank you, Ms. Green.
I want to clarify a couple of things. I don't think we touched on it, but this is, on this, since this is a continued public hearing, the, the, this is only open to people that didn't speak last time.
Right, I have a list of.
And just to clarify, this is, it's, it's not on solar generally, it's on racehorse. Comment's on racehorse solar.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter?
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Roxanna Gray, Spotsylvania County. Can Caroline County afford a seven point five million dollar lawsuit? Frederick County in Virginia is fighting a lawsuit over supervisors' rejection of a proposed solar farm. The Frederick County, the Board of Supervisors' rejection of a utility scale solar project has led to a lawsuit. The solar panel and the property owners filed a seven point five million dollar lawsuit against Frederick County Board of Supervisors. The solar company hoped to win approval to build an eighty acre solar plant with three hundred and twenty six acres of property, twenty megawatts. The supervisor voted six to one to deny the permit. The move came after the board approved two other permit applications for solar facilities in two thousand and twenty. The lawsuit alleges the board's denial was arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable. Caroline did a solar energy outline district to be welcoming, but the number of projects are increasing and may be getting bigger and bigger. Approving one opens the gateway to all solar panels. Please redo the solar energy overlay district and remove the criteria for special exemptions. The key provision of solar ordinance is for the protection of agricultural land, wetlands, and waterlands. Solar belongs on rooftops near highways, commercial, industrial zone land, marginal, marginal or condemned areas, not on rural agricultural land. Energy Corporation disregards water runoff and are willing to pay millions of dollars. And of course, you've heard about the different emotions, so I will not go into that any further. But I just wanted to let you know about this lawsuit that's out there on Frederick County in Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? What's that? Spotsylvania?
Hi, my name is Frances Collier, and I'm in Port Royal District. And I live on Quarters Road. What I'm worried about is the land. And I have a well, and I worry about stuff getting in my well. And I worry about other things too, so. But I would just like to say I would really hope that we, all our farmland won't be taken for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Vice Chair, members of the board. My name is Bob Schwartz. I reside in the Bowling Green District. And I will speak, as per Mr. McKenzie, solely to the Racehorse Project. And as a citizen of Caroline County, I am intimately familiar with all of the presentations made by the solar companies. And I just want to point out that this is a rural preservation district. And our forefathers, as it were, sought and deemed it advisable to have the rural preservation as well as the agricultural preservation districts. There's a reason for that. The vote that was taken by your planning commission, by your appointees, resulted in a two to two tie. And that is because two members of the planning commission were unable to be present. Had one or both of them been present, I feel very confident you would have gotten a decisive vote, whether it be yea or nay. Because those two representatives did not get a chance to speak for the people of their own district. So if you deny this, what is the penalty? There is none. Under the Virginia Clean Energy Act, which was politically driven and under our new administration, possibly could be repealed, there is no penalty if you deny it. And I urge you, listen to the citizens of the county. They do not want it. They don't want it in their own neighborhoods. They don't want to see the land used for something that is probably not viable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? I don't think so.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Members of the board. My name is Skylar Zunk. I'm here on behalf of the Land and Liberty Coalition. I know I've been in front of you all before, advocating and encouraging you all to explore renewable energy projects as they align with your ordinance. And I'm here tonight for a similar reason. I appreciate you keeping the public comment period open. I wasn't able to make it last week due to weather. I watched it remotely. I appreciate the opportunity to come speak. Land and Liberty Coalition, not to be repetitive, advocates for clean renewable energy projects that respect the landowner's rights to his private property as well as the neighbor's rights for his or her rights not to be infringed. You all have worked diligently on a solar overlay district and an ordinance that we believe is fair to all. It's your, it's your decision whether to give projects a thumbs up or a thumbs down. But you have developers who are coming to you with projects that are in accordance to that ordinance. Um, I caution you, I know there's a lot of anti-solar talk and, and folks coming because they have general concerns with the industry. It is an industry that makes money and is profitable because of how quickly technology has advanced. If it's safe enough to put on your homes, if it's safe enough to put behind stools, it's safe enough to be used for land that's currently in forestry. We're talking about fifty-three acres in this project in particular, out of a plot that's over a hundred fifty acres. Now, taking a look at all of the, the board application packets, it's a big, long document and I hope you guys have had the chance to make your way through it. But I believe it's going to be adequately screened. I believe it will not have adverse impacts to your neighbors. I've been in counties where folks have purposefully bought land next to a solar project because they know that that land is going to remain the same for thirty, forty, you name it, years. They make good neighbors. They're, they're not loud once they've been built. They do not pollute. They do not smell like other land uses. They do not even attract cars or traffic. Um, you know, once they're, once they're built and operational. They produce clean renewable energy for the grid, to power your house, to power mine, to power businesses as part of an all of the above energy strategy. That's yes, using fossil fuels. That's yes, approaching other, um, other means of clean electrical generation as, as those come forward. I urge you to continue the hard work in giving these projects thumbs up and thumbs down. I know in your board packet, there were several letters submitted in support of this project. If a petition is what is needed to help demonstrate to you all that there is grassroots support for clean energy projects, blink two times. And I'll come next month with a petition of dozens, if not hundreds, of your constituents. If that's really what's going to move the needle, I'd be happy to do so. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your hard work on this. Other counties are watching you all. We commend what you've done thus far and I hope you guys can find a way to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zunk. Zunk, all right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? The African, do you have any? I'll allow you five minutes.
Sure. I, I don't think I need five minutes. Uh, I'll try to take as little of your time as possible. Uh, you know, I, I think that you heard some voices in favor tonight. I think the voices that you heard raise concerns were more or less agnostic to the details of this particular project. I know that this is a new land use and people have questions. We've, we've done, I, I believe, our due diligence in reaching out to the neighboring community to make ourselves available to answer those questions. Those who, those who have accepted our invitation to learn about the project have, have grown comfortable with it. Uh, I think you have a fair amount of letters in, in the packet. It is hard to get people to come out and speak, especially in a pandemic. But they are here, some of them tonight, showing their support. They've written letters. You know, we have another seven uh, neighbors from three households. Uh, the Davis family who, who expected to be here tonight and speak. They had a birth in their family and unfortunately weren't able to be here. They didn't sign letters. If you guys are, are curious to see what they have to say, uh, but there's another stack of neighbors who, who are for this project. We have, have said this whole time that, you know, we see our biggest objective on this project when it comes to the community and make sure it's adequately screened and, and in accordance with, with the, the ordinance that you just passed. I believe our plan does that. We, we go way above and beyond uh, what, what other counties are requiring and even above and beyond what you guys are requiring with our proposal. I, I truly believe we'll be a good neighbor. The neighbors will be look, continue to look at natural vegetation. They're not going to be looking at these panels or, or in a, you know, we're not going to be impacting their ability to use their land in the way that they want to use their land. And I think that's important to us and, and we're ready to make that commitment. And if, uh, if, if the board doesn't believe that our, our commitments go far enough in that regard, we'd like the opportunity to continue talking. Again, we think they do, but uh, please let us keep talking. We've been working on this project for five years. We've been incorporating stakeholder feedback for that whole time, from before the Virginia Clean Energy Economy Act, by the way. That really has no bearing on the viability of this project. So uh, it, the one final note I would make is at the presentation for this and the Willbone Project, which you'll be discussing later. I did uh, suggest some changes to the conditions. I know the county has been working with other developers who have similar, i.e. identical problems with at least one of the conditions. It's my understanding that, that while they're continuing to look at that situation, they haven't come to resolution on it yet. I would say if the county is not ready to, to uh, discuss maybe an alternative to what's currently in that condition language, I, I would prefer to not have a vote on this project tonight, uh, just because that problem, that language is problematic enough that it threatens the project, quite frankly. So uh, that's all I really have to say. And thank you again for your time. And I imagine there'll be questions and I'll be glad to answer those.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Final call. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Seeing no one coming forward, public hearing is now closed. Board members?
Mr. Chair, I would move that the special exception application number oh five dash zero two zero one be deferred to the board's meeting on May the tenth, two thousand twenty-two in order to provide time to review possible DEQ and EPA water quality discrepancies and any relative general assembly action on solar projects.
Second.
There's a motion, I mean, second, that this be deferred until May the, uh, May the tenth or next, uh, at that meeting. After we look at DEQ regulations as well as general assembly action. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will hear this again will be continued until May the tenth, at our May tenth board supervisors' meeting. Thank you. Next, special exception zero three, two thousand twenty-one, Sandra Brown, owner and applicant.
Mr. Chairman, members of your board, your next public hearing is special exception uh, zero three dash two thousand twenty-one. Sandra Brown, owner and applicant. You're requesting a special exception permit in accordance with Article seventeen, Section thirteen and Article four, Section five point eleven of the Caroline County zoning ordinance on tax map one oh two dash A dash thirty-seven, uh, consisting of approximately one point five nine acres. The property is located at thirty thousand five hundred Richmond Turnpike in the Reedy Church Voting District. The comprehensive, the two thousand thirty comprehensive plan designates this area as planned development within the Dawn Community Plan. And the application is for an assisted living facility of up to twenty-five beds. The applicant seeking a special exception approval uh, to establish and operate up to twenty-five bed assisted living facility in an existing structure on Route three oh one. The structure has been vacant for a number of years, having last operated as a motel. Special exception permit was previously issued uh, for an assisted living facility uh, in two thousand and three. But uh, two thousand thirteen, but the uh, special exception uh, permit expired due to inactivity in following through with the permit. So the applicant is back basically requesting uh, a special exception permit for the same use uh, previously approved by the board of supervisors. The planning commission did hold a public hearing on this and forwarded a recommendation of approval to the board. Uh, and the conditions are included in uh, the packet. And with that, I'll address any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Fincham. Is the applicant here this evening? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, nice to be with you all. I'm John Bennett with AES Consulting Engineers, representing the owner. We have spent a good deal of time going through the, the process, generating the various items for the special exception application, site plan, working through staff comments, um, with the intent to obtain a special exception, allow the owner to move forward with final design and permitting for the site, um, to, to move through that process. We've talked about various general design considerations and really where we're at right now is looking to move forward with uh, the effort and the investment in uh, things like building design, site design. Uh, once we get past the special exception where we can work with staff on all those details. Uh, but the, the owner is interested in moving forward with the project at this time. And we feel like it's the right time for this site. It is a reuse of an existing building. And uh, we've, as I've said, we've submitted the site plan, met the various criteria, uh, parking, access, and so forth. And uh, we look forward to working with you all, answering any questions you may have tonight. And um, we're, we're open to any questions that are there. Um, but we respectfully would ask for the special exception approval to allow us to move forward with the site.
Thank you. All right, special exception. Oh, it's a little loud. The public hearing for special exception zero three dash two thousand twenty-one, Sandra Brown, owner and application is now open. Is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Seeing no one coming forward, close the public hearing. Uh, board members, how do you wish to proceed?
I have a couple of questions for the applicant chairman. Well, one of mine is for the building. I'm looking at the staff comments.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to have them come up.
Okay.
Mr. Whitman, would you come up for us?
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at the, the comments submitted by the building department on, on the building and, and the structure. And apparently the last part of this says there's a stop work order on the building currently, or at least when this was written.
Yes, this, this thing started back when we had the shovel-ready projects and got approved. And, and so then no plans were ever submitted and then some folks got started. And so I went in there and questioned them what was going on and they were going to turn it into this assisted living facility. Problem is, is the structure is so old, none of it comes close to complying with today's code. So I explained to them that we would need uh, engineered drawings submitted for review and approval before they could get started. So work stopped for quite a long time and then they got back in there and there were some new trusses. And so I, I came to an agreement with them that I'd let it get weather tight to get it out of the weather and by that, a new roof and some siding. And then they would have to submit their site plan to planning, which we never got, and plans for what the structure was going to be. Never got any of it. This, this has really been going on, finish, correct me if I'm wrong, eleven, twelve years? Two thousand one? Yeah, yeah. So nine years. So at this point, right now, since there's no site plan, no approved drawings, not even submitted for me to review and comment on, there's a stop work order that no work will be done to the building.
Mr. Fincham, is this, I mean, we're looking at specially, we're looking to change this. Is this normal or is this not normal for?
I would say this is an uncommon situation, but to add on to what Kevin just said, they can't submit a site plan or a building plan until they get a special exception permit from the board of supervisors. So, no, we haven't gotten there yet. It's because we have to get through this process. And if the board says no, there's no sense preparing the, the site plan or the building plan.
But, but didn't we have an original approval back there in the?
For a special exception. I, I don't think we ever had a site plan.
But we, but they, they've already had the special exception once.
Which expired.
Right, right. And that's what I'm saying. During that, during that whole evolution, nothing got submitted, nothing got reviewed, nothing got approved and it expired. So now they're here to get it again.
Okay.
And where we stand is there's a stop work order.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, what was the, do we know, what was the reason? And I don't know if it was said and maybe I wasn't, what was the reason the original one expired, the original SE?
Um, I, I, I can't speak to that. Perhaps the representative for the applicant, but it, my impression that, that the funds weren't available at the time.
But the SE just expires if no action is taken. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Under our ordinance, uh, lack of continuation with a, a special exception permit, permit becomes void.
That's what you're asking, Mr. Black?
Is it, you want to ask it to the applicant as well?
Yeah, if the applicant wants.
The representative is right there.
Yeah, first of all, I would, I would agree and concur with everything that was just said here. And uh, I think it's acknowledged that there were some things uh, done in the past and now they're, they're at the point where they understand what they need to do to move forward with the project. These are not folks who do site development and building development on a regular basis. They're, they're operators of, of assisted living facilities. And so now they're, they're, they're learning as they go through the process, hey, they understand they need to get the special exception and the site plan and building permits at this point. So that's, that's the reason for why there was stop work order in there. And I guess the original question was back in, I guess it was oh two, oh three with the original special exception. Uh, before my time with the project, my understanding is there was some financial reasons and maybe stretched thin on business front, trying to operate uh, assisted living, uh, more than one facility. So I think they may have just been stretched thin at the time and not able to complete the project then. Um, and now they're at the point where they're ready to move forward and make sure they're doing it properly, which is why I'm here.
So you're the developer?
I'm sorry?
Your role is you're the developer?
I'm the civil engineer, sir.
You're the civil engineer?
Yes, sir.
Are you recommending they connect to Dawn wastewater when they, in the process of this?
That's correct. There's, there's an existing sewer line uh, going to the site with a pump. And there was comments to the effect that during site plan, we would look, need to look into upgrading that design as appropriate, which we agree with.
Okay.
As long as you have a question.
I, I did. We have conceptual designs, which I guess you did because they're dated this year, dated November.
That's correct. You have site plans and then there's, there's a couple of conceptual building plans as well, which were done by the architect.
Right, right. But have you looked at these, Mr. Whitman? Have you seen these?
Yeah, yes, ma'am, I have. But nothing sealed.
Right, nothing sealed. But that's the general idea of what could fit there and it looks like it's, it's doable. Okay. And the financing, if this were to be approved, they have secured?
That's my understanding, yes.
And do you, can you give me the names of the other facilities that they operate?
Sandra could provide that. I know there's one that's in the city of Richmond that she operates. Can?
Is she here?
She was not able to be here tonight, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Forehand, you have any question?
Uh, my only comment is. My only comment is, you know, it's a building that's not being used right now, we have an opportunity to give it new life and provide a service to the county, so directly, we can, the fact that there's an engineer standing in front of us, and there's an architect that's done some drawings, it means they're two steps ahead of where they were many years ago, so I'm positive about looking.
Thank you, Mr. Black?
Just have a couple, Mr. Whitman, maybe you can help address this. The, as far as fire and emergency plans, I saw some concerns in there, what are, on a facility like this, how would that, as a building official, is there something special that they have to do for the fire and emergency, considering you're considering it assisted?
No, they just have to comply with the building code and the fire code, but I couldn't tell you if they do or not, because nothing's been submitted, and what you see in your package is a conceptual design.
Right.
Again, nothing sealed, nothing formal, could they get there? Yes. Depending on plans, middle review, and rework.
Okay, and then Mr. Fincham, I think I've got one more for you, and then I'll be done, Mr. Chairman.
Jeff, I'll go to Floyd, then come back to you.
There was a concern, I think I read in here, I put it down, that there was only 13 parking spaces provided for a 25-unit facility, has that been addressed, or?
I think as part of our review, we determined that the 13 spaces, there may be the need for some more, there is space for more, I don't think we need the full set, or the full number of parking spaces that the formulas would dictate because of the type of use.
Okay.
As an assisted living facility.
But you're gonna have staff, visitors?
Right, we'll go through that, make sure at the end of the day, the numbers meet what's needed for the site.
Just seems, okay, I appreciate it, thank you, that's all.
Mr. Thomas, I skipped you, so let me come back to you. Thank you, Mr. Bennett, could I ask you a question? And, you know, Mr. Forehand said we've got an engineer and architect standing in front of us, and I'm sure you would definitely not agree that they're the same person, you're the one who makes it work, the architect is the one who visualizes it, so is the building structurally sound now, in your opinion?
Well, I would agree with what you just said, I am a civil engineer, so I take care of everything outside of the building technically, speaking for the building itself, not being an architect or structural engineer by profession, what I would say, my opinion on that is, there's good bones to the building that have to be looked at and evaluated by structural engineers and architects, and when they do their actual design, they need to confirm that everything is in compliance with Virginia State Building Codes, and we have a building official right here that we'll obviously have to work closely with in the design, so they will have to represent all the calculations, the loads, and prove that the structure is gonna be correct for the site.
So we don't, I mean, I've seen that building, and when Mr. Whitman said that it was done under the times of shovel-ready projects, shovel-ready projects was the American Rescue Plan in 2009, under President Obama, so that's a long time ago, it's been sitting there for at least that long, and if you can't say it's structurally sound, I'm not sure what good the special exception is gonna do to you, so what's the next step?
Yeah, what I would say, what the special exception does is a very important step, and that is, the special exception speaks to the use of the site, and it allows us to move forward with this use, and then from here, we move into actual design and putting forth the investment into the architectural drawings, the structural engineering, the plumbing design, mechanical electrical plumbing that goes along with it, as well as the site design, which we'll be doing, which is a significant investment, and in that process, that's when all of those things are really thoroughly vetted, and that's just kind of the natural course of a development project, and the order of things, we're dealing with big picture tonight, and the intent is for us to hopefully speak to your satisfaction on those things to allow us to move forward with the next steps.
And you said the actual operators of this facility couldn't make it tonight, and you have some other, or they have some other projects that they've done?
My understanding is that she operates one other adult senior living facility that's in the city of Richmond, I believe she's given that information to county staff earlier in the project as far as where the location was, but that certainly can be provided, yeah.
Thank you, I'm just gonna ask Mr. Fincham if you have that information, Mr. Schwartz was a part of the planning committee when he spoke, I don't know if they knew anything about it.
I don't have it in the packet I have with me tonight, but I can get that to you.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Wong.
Yes, Mr. Fincham, what happens, the forest sale, what happens if we issue the special use permit for this? I mean, we definitely need care areas, and I love our citizens to be able to stay in Carolina as they age, but she, what kind of a permit or detail would this company need to follow so that we made sure everything was the code and safe?
The next steps would be the site plan and the approval of the building construction plans, or I should say, review of the building construction plans, to determine whether they meet the code requirements and a permit can be issued. If it can be issued, then the project ends up dying because the time limit on the special exception permit.
If it fails inspection, or we still have to wait two years before anybody could do something else for that building, correct?
No, somebody could come in with an application for another use, the, by ordinance, it's void after two years if there's no action.
Like before?
Right.
And there is a medical inspection also, as far as safety for this type of a care unit that is done by someone qualified by the state?
It would require?
Before occupancy.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Whitman, you and I have looked at this building over the last few years, and a little bit of work was done here, a little bit of, and I didn't see any permit or anything hanging, that's why I kinda got you involved in it, but, and it was supposed to be just watertight, and then they were supposed to come back when you red flagged it, is that correct?
That's correct, sir, and to me, this is the chicken or the egg, if you can sit here and consider this SE, that building is old, old, the clearances that are required today for ADA, and that's why you'll see in my comments, that in a structural evaluation of this place, along with a layout for bathrooms and what's needed, and if you go in there today, the bathrooms are tiny, so to think you're gonna use that plumbing and you're gonna start tearing up slabs, and, so this conceptual drawing you have there, it really doesn't amount to a hill of beans, to me, the evaluation of what's there should have been done, and we've had nine, 10 years to do that, to determine whether we can even use this shell that's there for what we're trying to do, or we're back with another site plan because we determined we can't use any of that, and we gotta demo it, so then, does what we wanna do fit on the lot, so, so to say you get the SE first, no, to me, you need to see with what we have there.
Is even viable.
Is it even viable?
Right.
That was my point in my review letter there for the TRC.
Right. Mr. Bennett, have you been to the site?
Yes, sir, I have.
And based on your professional evaluation, looking at that site, do you feel that that site is structurally sound?
I feel like the site.
I mean, the building.
Yeah, I feel like the building absolutely, and I think the applicant owner, she does own the property, I think she fully acknowledges that there's work that needs to be done to that building, I'm certain that you couldn't just come in as it is today and use it as is, that there's going to be upgrades that are required to that building, and significant investment to do so.
Significant.
And again, and again, that's why we're here tonight, is to try to?
That's what I'm saying, a motel bathroom, and that was my question to you originally, Mr. Bennett, and hidden secret, my degree is in architecture, so I visualize and I, you know, count on folks like you to do work, and I rode by the building for 20 years, 30, 30 years at least, and it's been the same, so, I don't know, I kind of agree with Mr. Whitman in that we need a little more information before we say, yeah, go ahead, because it's gonna help us both in the long run, you know, if the building won't really stand up, and if the bathrooms are too small for wheelchairs, it's not gonna work, so maybe they could look at it a little more before we decide.
Well, I guess what I would say to that is, we have a landowner who's interested in putting forth the investment in this building, in the design, in the evaluation, and I think they're looking at doing that in the due course of this, and they're looking forward to getting the architect going, but they wanna make sure that they actually have a viable project in order to do that, I understand there's probably two ways of looking at this, the chicken and the egg, but we have a landowner right now that's ready and able to move forward with this, and the way we see it is, we'd like to have the land be able to move forward with the design, and?
Well, Mr. Bennett, you have the land, the question is whether the structure that's there is viable, which in my district, I go by it every day on my way to the trash dump, and before they ever tried to get it watertight, the building was a mess, and with ADA compliance and all the other safety issues, I have some real concerns that it's even, it's viable, what I would suggest is that you ensure us, first of all, that it's viable. I think there should be some type of stuff, but I can't tell you what to do, but I can just tell you, as it sits right now, I would not vote for a special exception, you'd have to put more skin in the game and bring something else to the table, because additional work was done when it was supposed to be watertight, they continued to work on the building, and I kept asking, where's the permit, what's going on, and no one followed the process or procedure, so my concern is, if you didn't follow it then, why should I think you're gonna follow it now? So I think there's a real issue there, maybe a trust factor, but you're gonna have to give me something else than coming to this board and saying that I'm an engineer and I believe it's viable, and I believe it's, I need more than what you have here in this packet.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Forehand? Well, I was just gonna say, this is unappreciated, this is, this is special exception and not a rezoning.
Right.
So rezoning would be forever, a special exception, if you don't do anything as what happened in 2009, in a couple of years, it basically goes away.
Right.
So, you know, although I'm extremely skeptical, the risk factor in doing a special exception is a lot less than a rezoning.
Correct.
Because we could say, we approved a special exception, but if you find out in the next two years, the building's not viable, you're gonna say, well, we're not gonna do it, the special exception goes away, no harm, no foul. The other issue is, it's already zoned for something.
Right.
So if you tear this building down and build a new one on that same spot, you could do that without us doing anything, right?
We would still need a special exception for the?
The use.
For the use, yes, sir.
But I mean, the facility is, or the structure is another story, the use, I don't think any, well, speaking for myself, I would have no problem in approving a special use for an assisted living facility, that's not the question we have, the question is the structure, so.
And my comment actually is, piggybacks on that, and that comment is, I do trust Mr. Whitman, he is our eyes and ears out in the county, and he and his staff, and if the building needs to be demoed, or if it's not structurally sound, he's gonna tell us, he's gonna tell the applicant, and then this project goes nowhere, and then we're, we'll see this again when someone must turn it into low-cost housing, so I don't see a risk here, like I said before, we have an engineer in front, we have a building that has been preserved by making it watertight, the chicken or egg, I understand that, I don't wanna spend any more money before I get an SE, special exception done, if I were a businessman, then 12 years ago was probably a steep learning curve for them, and I understand that, I've known people that have gone through that learning process, and the fact that he is standing here and that there is some sort of plan, it tells me they have learned from that experience, so I trust Mr. Whitman, I trust Mr. Fincham to be our eyes and ears, there is a whole chapter or two or four in the building code regarding assisted living facilities and what they can have in clearances, and again, Mr. Whitman will make sure that all of those are in, are there, so I don't see any risk for the board, that we just don't approve it now and move on, so, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forehand, any other comments, any? All right, let me open the public hearing, and then we'll move forward, the public hearing for special exception 03-2021, Sandra Brown owner is now open, is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Yeah, I thought I did open, all right, seeing no one, the public hearing is closed, so a second time, again, all right. I called him up, after I opened that call, I think I called it, but, all right, houses board, wish to proceed.
I'll make a motion, we approve the SE 03-2021. I'll second.
There's a motion and a proper second.
Like a little discussion?
Yeah, let me do, there's a motion and a proper second that we approve special exception 03-2021, discussion, Mr. Sealer.
And I guess my question's to the applicant's representative.
That's what it is.
Right. I just wanna be sure they understand where we are, I mean, because they're not here tonight, typically, we get to talk to the applicant, which makes it a whole lot easier. I too have driven by this building for forever and have watched it just decay, and have real concerns, because it's, as we've all, I guess, determined, it's an on-slab structure, so it's got multiple issues when it's got plumbing issues, because everything's in concrete, I do think it's a little safe that it's a special exception, and we can always, if Mr. Whitman comes to us and says that they violated anything, we can pull the special exception, is that true, Mr. Fincham?
Yes, sir, you can void a special exception permit after a public hearing for noncompliance with the conditions.
And this can only be with their applying for, correct, the conditions limit out everything else?
Yes, this is specifically for an assisted living facility.
Okay, so there's no?
Yeah, it can be housing or anything else, it's specifically for?
So it can't be apartments, it can't be?
That is correct.
It can't be a motel, it can't be anything like that, it's gotta be assisted living.
That is correct, that is what the use permit is specific to.
Mr. Whitman, the exterior of the building, I know it's brick, but there's been some type of material put on the brick, in order to do a proper inspection, wouldn't that have to come off? The exterior, I don't know whether it's whatever prefab material that is, I know the roof's okay, I know that, they put that, but they put material on the outside of that brick.
Yes, sir, and two things, the exterior, what they're gonna have to do is insulate the place, and of course, all of that'll occur inside, and we can do some remedial inspections, have them pull part of the siding, see what they did, so we could get there.
I just wanna make sure it's a safe environment, and it's been vacant for 20-some years, it's just, I mean, it's been watertight for maybe a year and a half, maybe a year. I mean, it's been, it's been watertight for maybe a year and a half, may maybe a year.
Maybe about a year.
Maybe about a year, so nineteen years of letting everything come in and out, gentlemen, is not not a good situation. I I just have some real, because I looked at the building before they ever started to to make it watertight. And then they went too far in in terms of putting materials on the outside of the building, so.
And my 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 concern in the review there is, yeah, we're going in in an evaluation, we've had, I've told them for nine years. We need a structural evaluation to determine what's good and what's bad, here we are nine years later. So we get in there and we start measuring for ADA accessibility and what can work, and we give them a number. And now they can't make it work for that number, and now we've either got to add on the front, the side, the back, changes the whole site plan. My review comments were to prevent that, hey, let's get the structural evaluation, okay, we know this part is good. This is the square footage we have to work with, we can do the layout. Bedrooms, bathrooms, shower facilities, reception area, hey, this footprint works or it doesn't, and if it doesn't. What we're gonna do, we're gonna demo or we're gonna add on, because if you do something like that, it changes the whole proposed site plan.
That's a good point, can the can the special exception, I guess for you and Mr. Fincham. Be tied to the current square footage of the building and the number of beds?
That's that's his, I just do the building.
To the structural inspection.
Well, we we had to have him for something, right?
I, yes, you could tie it to to not to exceed the twenty five beds, if if the board so desires.
We could, we we could make that a condition.
Yes.
Can we also make a condition that the current square footage, to eliminate what what Mr. Whitman was just talking about. The current square footage is all the special exception applies to.
But why would we want to, if they were to double the size of the building, who's that hurting, it's not hurting the county.
Yeah, as as long as they meet the setbacks, but it would affect the site.
Agreed, which is not coming out of the county's pocket.
Correct.
It's coming out of the owner's pocket, again, why are we?
Yeah.
Why why are we worried about that, if it's not viable for them, they're not gonna do it.
And 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 my point was, it was a special exception for that given building, as as Mr. Whitman was saying, they might say, oh, now I've got to add. Twice as much space in the back or in the front or whatever.
As long as it doesn't do.
But again, I'm I'm not harmed.
Twenty four to a hundred.
I'm, yeah, I'm not harmed.
That's that that I, if we want to add add a number in, that's that's fine, but like I said, if it if it's tripled the size, it's it's a bigger, nicer building. More space for the occupants, why do we care?
Theoretically.
Correct.
Theoretically.
All right, it's Lord, any further discussion? Yes, sir.
The other thing you could consider is adding a condition that requires the structural analysis to be performed. And provided to the building official within X period of time. To make that determination as to whether these the renovation is is viable.
Yeah, all right, Mr. Bennett, what time is good for him? And and who's who's the young lady that was whispering in your ear? She part of the team?
She is part of the team, yes, sir, yeah.
She's the architect.
Contractor, contract. As far as as far as a timing, everything we're talking about, I mean, we have to do that on the front end of a project, you you know this as an architect that.
No, I said my degree was in architecture. Not an architect, we're all upfront.
Fair enough. But but these are things that would have to be done on the front end of the design, these things, the baseline of the design has to be established, they have to do those calculations, we're happy to share it with staff. I don't know that that needs to be a a condition of the special exception used for this site. I don't know what that really gains you, because we have to do it, we have to do it anyways in order to get our building permit.
Six months, no, he he wants something.
I mean, if we feel like, if you feel like it's a priority and you and you need a number, I mean. Sure, six months, a year, somewhere, now we've got two years to get, I guess, a building permit on this, so I would probably say a year, just to allow as much flexibility as possible.
Just ask them to bring out a valuation.
What what do you want, six months, year?
Yeah.
Six months.
Sure, sure, I mean, it's obviously a priority and, as I've said before, we worked with staff for quite a long time and we're not about to stop now, so we look forward to it.
We're all happy, because if if it if he gets it to you in six months, you you know it's good, if not.
So there is a motion, there's a motion and a second on the floor, Mr. Forehand, who are you?
Question, Mr. Chairman, would would Mr. Forehand and Mr. Black amend their?
That's what I'm gonna ask them, if they would amend, are you willing to amend your motion?
To have a structural assessment within six months?
Within the six months.
Sure.
All right, then then the motion is amended. Uh, for approval of a special exception that we, yes, sir, Chris, what are we doing wrong?
No, nothing, no, I just wanted to clarify, so that the motion is that that structural assessment be submitted to the planning department within six months.
That sounds perfect.
The building department.
The building department.
Just this, though, to comply.
Six months.
Right, to comply with the condition, all they need to do is submit the assessment.
And have it make sure he approves the.
Okay, that's that's my question.
Right, it has to be approved by the building inspector.
Okay.
That it's viable.
All right, so submitted and approved within six months.
Well, here we go, the assessment identifies flaws that need to be remedied. All right, that's, that might take longer, okay.
No, that is, they've done the structural study.
Right, right, because then it then it jumps out of one boat and into another boat, and then you're you're gonna need more time.
Right.
So. The assessment's one thing, the how are you gonna fix it?
So to strike approval, and it's just that that assessment be submitted within six months.
Correct.
Thanks.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor that we approve the special exception zero three twenty one. With the addendum to the motion that we do a building assessment within six months, is that fair?
That's fair. Structural assessment, yes, yep.
Structural assessment.
One more discussion point is, we were asking Mr. Fincham to get us the information from the actual person that's gonna run the operation. And we're gonna approve it, it's it's too late for that to factor into our our decision, but we would like to know who it is.
Yes, you had asked specifically about the other facility, it is, I have that information.
Okay.
It was actually in the materials in the staff report, but it's eighteen thou, eighteen zero one, Fourth Street, Richmond, Virginia.
What's the name of it?
Alan, do you have?
Can you send that to me, Mr. Fincham, in an email?
Brownstone Assisted Living.
Okay.
And I'll send that to you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I thought I saw something, it didn't say brownstone, it just said the list, right?
Okay, there's a motion, proper second, any more discussion? All in favor of special exception, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose, aye, opposed, nay, so motion carries five to one. No, I'm not, if you see the inside of the building, you wouldn't be, okay, good luck to you, Mr. Bennett.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be watching. Okay. Next on the agenda is RZ zero six, twenty twenty one, the applicant has asked for this to be deferred. Mr. Fincham?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, the appropriate motion would be to accept the request for a deferral by the app.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the referral from the applicant, request for referral, uh, to. Defer from the applicant, that we accept that.
Thank you, Mrs. Longbecker. Second by Mr. Thomas, there's a proper motion, proper second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose, motion carries six zero, thank you. Stay right there, Mr. Finch, special exception zero four dash twenty twenty one, Burke Development LLC, Burke Holdings. Agenda item number seven.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, your next public hearing is SPX zero four dash twenty twenty one. Burke Development LLC, Burke Holdings LP, Concord North LLC, Concord South LLC. AA Wright Properties LLC, Donald Gardner, Milford Excelsior LLC. Maggie Nelson Thornton Estate, and CC Solar LLC. Uh, owners, CC Solar LLC applicant are requesting a special exception permit in accordance with Article seventeen, Section thirteen. And Article fifteen, Section twenty three, uh, solar energy overlay district. Uh, on multiple parcels consisting of approximately a thousand six hundred eighty two acres. Property is primarily located south of Route six oh five, west of the intersection with Sunshine School Road in the Port Royal voting district. The twenty thirty comprehensive plan designates this property as agricultural preservation, and the proposed use is a major solar energy facility.
Thank you, Mr. Fincham, is the applicant here?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, planning staff, my name is Rob Probst, I'm with Urban Grid, I'm a solar developer representing the CC Solar Project. Chairman, before I get started in the the actual presentation that I have for you tonight, I just wanted to hand the board a couple of items. One was, there's two permit conditions that we have been talking to the planning staff and. We we submitted some proposed minor changes to this.
We have those.
Okay.
Item fourteen and twenty four.
Uh, yes, sir, so you did, fantastic, thank you.
Do you want to read those so that everybody understands what those are?
Sure, fourteen was the permit condition also referenced by the previous solar applicant. That had to do with stormwater management, one of the stormwater management requirements in in the ordinance. Um, and it was specific to some language around. What ultimately may happen or may not happen with respect to an EPA Chesapeake Bay watershed model. Whether it comes into play or it doesn't, so just some speculation there, and then condition twenty four. Had to do with videotaping the roads to assess damage on a on a biweekly basis. And we 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 don't really have a problem with with necessarily assessing the roads. And the the modification that we're simply proposing is that we we videotape the roads. When when there's damage there to to videotape and and not just simply do it every other week, just to videotape the roads, that's a. A time and expense that we don't want to incur, we don't have to wanna, we we don't want to saddle the the planning staff with lots and lots of film of the road. There's there's no damage there, so anyway, that's those two conditions I had to deal with. The the other item I just wanted to share with you, and I'll talk about this more in the presentation, but this is just the the details around. The the proposed vegetative buffer, and it was some, the the vegetative buffers that I'm gonna share with you in the presentation. Were put together by Timmons Group, an outside consulting firm, and this is just some more details and close up images of it, but I'll again, I'll share those in the presentation. Okay, um, well, let me go ahead and thank you again for the opportunity this evening. I'm very excited to share some information with you guys about the CC Solar Project. The first slide here, I purposely selected this slide, not because it's seasonal, which it is, but. I think this really does a great job of representing the the project site. This is what you see here, just, you know, a thicket of heavily wooded pine trees. And if you've had the opportunity to visit the site, you'll know that this is a site that is largely surrounded. By this tent type of dense vegetation, with the exception of just a really couple of short stretches of road, which I'll I'll show in the vegetative. Visualizations later in the presentation, but this is, I think, just a fantastic asset to the site. To minimize and shield the views of the solar project from the surrounding community and and the road there. Not sure. Okay, next slide. Yeah, good, next slide. Okay, um, I wanted to talk just a a moment or two about who we are, Urban Grid is a company, I think it's very important. That you have an understanding of who we are, that wants to can take on a very large project within your county. And I want to give you the confidence that this is something that we've we've done many times, we've developed many projects, so we have a a very deep staff of expertise. We, Urban Grid is a leading developer of utility scale solar projects, which is what we're proposing at this site. We were founded in Richmond, Virginia in two thousand eleven, and we have offices in Richmond, as well as Washington DC and Stevensonville, Maryland. We are a staff of approximately sixty and growing. We've got over four hundred ninety seven megawatts of solar projects that are operating in primarily the mid Atlantic. With some in New Mexico and New York, and a very robust pipeline of over ten thousand megawatts of solar projects that we're developing. And we have a proven track record of developing quality projects, next slide. Um, and this is just an example of some of the projects, not all of them, but some of them specifically within Virginia. And as as you can see, there's several projects that are already in operation in Surrey County and Westmoreland and Henrico. Excellent. With respect to public outreach, you know, we 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 believe solar projects have many benefits, offer a lot of benefits to the community. And this, it really allows us to, you know, pursue projects like this in a very transparent environment. By providing people with the facts about solar energy, we've delivered presentations to the Lady Smith Roach and Club, the Caroline Chamber of Commerce. And we've held two community meetings, one when we made the application last summer, and then one recently. Within the project area on July seventeenth, so we, we're we're all about, again, transparency, getting information out. And and making sure that if people have questions, they're more than welcome to to reach out to us and. And we're happy to to engage with them, next slide. Uh, so just some, just some high level information about the project, it's about a mile and a half east of Page. As Mr. Fincham noted, it's sixteen hundred eighty seven acres in total size. However, the area that would actually be under panel is approximately six hundred and sixty five acres. So quite a bit of area that is is not under panel and would be left for for buffer areas and wetlands and et cetera. Uh, it's a hundred and fifty megawatt AC, we call a single axis tracker solar project. We've got five participating landowners, and we're proposing to connect to an existing transmission line owned by Dominion. Terms of timing, the construction would begin in early twenty twenty three, with completion in twenty twenty four. And again, I think the the highlight of this project is the remote location with extensive mature vegetation surrounding it, excellent. And this is just right straight from the permit application, preliminary site plan that you have, just showing you kind of. A preliminary layout of where the the panels would be. With the top, with the top right, I'll just note the top right hand corner there, it's the point of interconnection, where you see that orange square to the existing transmission line. Next slide. So as I said, while it's a a project area that's just over sixteen hundred acres, only about six hundred and fifty so acres are under panel. There's quite an extensive, you know, wetlands throughout the site that we are going to avoid and and buffer away from. This pink area I've tried to demonstrate is some of the wildlife corridor areas to allow the free migration. to allow the free migration of the animals in the area. And this is not a site that's going to be encircled with a fence all the way around the six hundred and sixty-five acres. It's really kind of, if you will, in pods or segmented areas that would be fenced in. So there'll be plenty of ability for wildlife to maneuver throughout the project area. Next slide, please. Oftentimes, I'm asked by folks in different project areas, you know, what, how did you choose this site? This particular site was chosen because it was close to an existing transmission line, which is required by the county solar ordinance. There's quite a bit of contiguous, relatively flat acreage, very little farm acreage is utilized. This is really commercial timberland that we're talking about. Remote location with few nearby dwellings. Again, surrounded by trees, which helps shield the project from the view of nearby houses and people traveling along Page or Sunshine School Road, which are the two main roads that traverse the project area. And just to point on that, in terms of the, the couple of, the couple of areas where there's not really any extensive existing vegetation, I went down and actually measured those segments. There's one four hundred and forty-seven-foot segment on Page Road, which would require some additional vegetative screening. And then there's three segments on Sunshine School Road totaling just over eighteen hundred feet.
Mr. Probst, let me interrupt you. How long was this presentation?
Maybe another seven minutes or so.
Well, you just went past ten.
Okay. I'm sorry, was there a ten-minute limit?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was aware of that. Sorry, I'd just like to be really thorough in the information.
I understand. I think this is a presentation that you sent us in the packet. If I remember most of this, that I read was in the board packet or in the, that you sent us, I think electronically. It looks like the same presentation.
Okay.
So if you could wrap up in the next two minutes, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, yes, sir. Yes, sir. I can do that. I just point out that there are no dwellings located directly across from those open vistas. And again, those would be areas that we would put vegetation in, but there's no dwellings across from those. Next slide. I'll just highlight that on this slide, there's a projection of between thirteen and a half and sixteen million for the life of the project. And that really depends on whether the county taxes the project under the revenue share model or the M and T tax. And I'll point out that, you know, unlike a housing development, there's really no impact to county infrastructure or services, which would require things like water, sewer, schools, police, and fire, et cetera. Lot of opportunities here for local contractors that would supply gravel or concrete fencing landscaping. Next slide. Next slide. I've, we've reached out to a number of businesses in the area that are highlighted on this map that have the potential to supply some goods and services to the project. And these folks are very eager to do some business should we be able to move forward with the project. Next slide. I'll point out that there's very limited vehicle trips during the project operations once, once the project's up and running, really just for some planned maintenance and landscaping, but very little vehicle traffic once it's operational. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. And the other thing, it's really important to us as a company is to align ourselves with entities in the community and come alongside them, support them. We are a company that has a long-term operation and ownership position with our projects. And to be a good corporate citizen from the start and throughout the life of the project is important to us. We've already started to work with some of these organizations, Caroline's Promise, the YMCA, and the Caroline County Department of Social Services. Next slide. Next slide. And I won't go through these remaining slides just to say that these are the visualizations that I talked about that show different points throughout the project area and mimics what the additional vegetative buffer will look like once it's planted initially at year five and then at year ten. I'll end there. I do have a representative from Kimley Horn with me tonight to answer any questions you may have about stormwater management and erosion control.
Okay, let me open the public hearing, and then she can speak at the time if she'd like to. Our special, special exception, zero four, two thousand twenty-one, Burke Development LLC. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Please come forward, state your name and your magisterial district or your voting district.
Good evening. My name is David Ogul. I reside on Page Road and to the best.
What's your last name, sir?
Ogul, O-G-L-E.
Thank you.
To the best of my knowledge, that's still in the Port Royal Magisterial District. I don't honestly know. It has changed a couple of times. I have no real objection to solar energy. I think it's wonderful. Solar and wind energy are a hope, the coming thing. Like to see coal shut down completely, but that's for another day. I, however, object to being surrounded by solar panels, myself personally. Mr. Burke, who owns the majority of this property, also owns a great deal of property on Woodford Road where he resides. And I would much prefer to see this solar field on Woodford Road. I understand that he has not offered that for sale to handle the solar field, and I can understand it because he knows, does not want to be surrounded by solar panels any more than I do. I also saw something in the write-up concerning water needed during the construction and perhaps for the maintenance of these panels about a well. And if this is approved, I would very much like to have some comments put in the approval about the well and impact it might have on existing wells. I have lived at my location for twenty-five years, had absolutely no problem with the amount of water in my well. And it concerns me that wells that may have to draw a lot of water, for whatever reason. I have seen it in the past where they empty wells in the location close to it. So I don't know what the outcome of this is going to be, but again, I would ask for approval of some management of other existing wells. I met during one of these local meetings and really appreciate the information that was provided. And as I said before, I believe in solar energy, just not as close to me because it'll be at my back property line. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ogul. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Kenneth Spear, and my wife and I live in the Port Royal District on a twelve-acre lot that is adjacent to the proposed solar energy project. We live in Caroline County because we love the country life, country life and the outdoors. Like many other county residents, we would like to see this area stay the same as it is right now. But we know that that's not realistic. The I-95 corridor between Northern Virginia and Richmond is growing, and we are not going to be able to stop that growth. We would much rather have a quiet solar panels next to our house than a large housing development with all of the extra noise and traffic that that would bring. This project will not require the county to build additional schools or other facilities. Since the solar project requires very few county services, after the construction is completed, the additional taxes will help keep our property taxes from increasing any more than necessary. We previously lived in the Short Pump Area of Henrico County for about thirty years and watched it change from a rural area to a suburb of Richmond with all of the subdivisions, shopping centers, new schools and traffic that that growth entails. We do not want to see that happening to Woodford. The solar project will be a good neighbor for the next thirty years or more and generate very little traffic. I believe that the county has done a good job of drafting regulations that will establish development standards for solar projects that will minimize the impact on local residents and landowners. In addition to protecting the existing wetlands, the fact that only about six hundred and sixty acres of the one thousand six hundred eighty-two acres will be fenced will allow plenty of room for local wildlife. I also like the idea of the wildlife corridors that will allow wildlife to move through the project to the adjacent woods and farmland. I have lived long enough to know that we cannot stop change. But through good planning, engineering, and design, we can make it better. I believe that this project accomplishes that objective, and I recommend that the board approve the special exception permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spears. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, again.
Good evening.
My name is Bob Schwartz, and I'm from the Bowling Green District. I would just like to remind the board of my previous comments. Having checked the record, I think you received this with a no vote at a two-to-two tie. And again, one-third of the representatives of the Planning Commission were not present to cast a ballot on this issue. And I think that you would have had a deciding vote at that point.
And, Mr. Schwartz, you're a member of the Planning Commission, right?
Yes, sir, I am. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Hello, Roxanna Grace, Botzavania. Thanks for your time again. Decommissioning is an important issue, and it has to be dealt with now so that you are not stuck with thousands of acres of solar panels just sitting there, not utilized. The sole, most solar developer operators are LLCs. They walk away from the solar plant whenever they want. If the LLC is leasing the land, then the landowner becomes responsible for the cleanup. And I believe all of the solar projects now under approval in Caroline are from leased property. When landowners cannot pay for the cleanup, they will lose their land, and the taxpayers are still going to be held accountable for that cleanup. The county should notify all landowners leasing of their obligations. The county, as a representative of its citizens, should notify all landowners leasing of their obligation for cleanup costs and should be able to back out of their contract with no issue. Notification should also include that the bond surety may not cover the cleanup cost, and the surety couldn't, could be reduced at any time by the county. Counties, Caroline's County, over, solar overlay allows a reduction in salvage value, which should not be allowed. To protect taxpayers, the bond must adequately cover all costs, including inflation. The cost estimate should include scrap values, should not include scrap values since no one knows the value of scrap twenty to thirty years hence. The county needs a fifteen percent contingency to be included in the cost estimate to protect itself. It also needs a detailed plan for recycling materials once they break or wear out. We need to prevent environmental damage from hazardous materials. Solar panels create a big bulky sheet of electronic waste at the end of their lives. Solar panels have hazardous waste due to heavy metals, titanium, lead, et cetera. They contain hazardous, hazardous waste classification carries. It's with it a string of expensive restrictions. Hazardous waste can only be transported at designated times and by select routes, et cetera. It makes good environmental and economic sense to be, have manufacturers involved in the product's end of life because if the manufacturer's not involved, it falls on the government. A county in New York is requiring manufacturers to present a recycling plan to the county. The law says discarded panels may not be stored in the county for more than ninety days. The intention of the county here is to become, is not to become the dumping ground for the next best idea, whether it was the chemical industry. An example, it was the radioactive waste that was left behind from the Manhattan Project. Then this, this New York County is also working on another law that will require manufacturers with batteries that store solar panels to take steps to control the risk of an electrical fire that may reduce toxic fumes. The efficiency of solar panels decreases by each year. If the next generation of panels are cheaper and more efficient, solar panels may opt for replacement sooner, maybe fifteen, seven years, or sooner than that.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. This accelerates the hazardous waste disposal. Also, leased property should have something in the liens in the county that they are responsible for cleanup. So if they try to sell their property, the next owner knows that they're responsible for that cleanup. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter?
Good evening. My name is Kirk Harklow. I'm part of the Port Royal District. We have a hundred and thirty-acre farm off of Bull Church Road and Sedon Road. There's a single parcel separating the proposed project site, which is less than two hundred and fifty yards from our property. We are also the only civilian aviation asset in Caroline County. Our airstrip serves the community and has hosted multiple youth events for the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts. We also provide training as a training field for the United States Air Force Auxiliary, the Civil Air Patrol, and as a stop for the crop dusters that service all the agricultural land around Caroline County. I contend that the project, if approved, will adversely affect the character and established pattern of development in the area in which it is located. And one of the initial concerns is doing to having the airstrip is the effects of takeoff and landing and the thermals that will be created by that large body of panels. Additionally, the proposed area has long been held in agricultural preservation and used in timberlands and agricultural use that fits with the current two thousand thirty zoning plan for Caroline County. If the project is approved, I think we can believe that these lands will not be returned to agricultural use at the end of their lifecycle. I don't know of a crop or livestock that would offer the same profit or return. The only thing that I could see following that would be a larger development in that site. To speak to the character of Caroline County, we moved here in two thousand thirteen because of the rural and agricultural character of Caroline County and the great interactions we've had with its residents. I do not see the great benefit to Caroline County from approving this exemption. Yes, there will be additional taxes, but the energy created here, like other proposed projects, will provide little energy to Caroline County. Instead, the energy, quote-unquote, renewable energy credits will be bought up by large companies so they can market themselves as green, as they have already done with their existing sites, such as the Colonial Trail West one hundred and fifty-megawatt facility, whose credits were bought by Facebook, the Spring Grove Facility, which is ninety-eight megawatts, which was bought by Facebook, and Brile Farms, and Grady's Mill, which is forty-two megawatts, that was bought by Shell Energy. The reason we moved here, and I suspect the reason you all have stayed or moved, has a lot to do with the character of the county. I hope that when my children are grown, there are agricultural and rural lands available for them to set their roots down into. I don't, I hope we don't have to drive by a solar farm, and when they ask what I don't, I hope we don't have to drive by a solar farm, and when they ask what power does that go to, we say, outside of here. What does it do? It's for Facebook.
Thirty seconds.
Oh, thank you. Caroline County should not bear the cost and burden so that companies far away can market themselves as green while decimating our county. I further propose that the solar project overlay district be greatly reduced and instead use a cap that is tied to the needs of the Caroline County residents, such as twenty percent power generation for the needs of the county. This one project, one hundred and fifty megawatts, is more power than the complete households of Caroline County needs. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartwell. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Ray Campbell. I vote in Bowling Green. I live in the town of Bowling Green. I've kicked around in government for more years than I can admit, and I know that government has its procedures for everything. It's even got procedures for its procedures. A few minutes ago, you followed your procedures with an applicant who had not checked off all the boxes to allow them to achieve their goal. All I'm saying is you set up procedures for this solar project, and the people who are coming before you are checking off the boxes that you've put up. So if they comply with the procedure, I think the board should comply with the procedure. I don't know how many people in this room use coal oil or kerosene to light their homes. I know I don't. But everybody's going home tonight, and they're going to flip that switch. If the lights don't come on, guess what? They're calling the power company. Where's my power? What they don't want to hear is, gee, we don't have the power to send you because we couldn't get our project built. So I recommend you building the project. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. If there are any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them. If not.
You can ask him. Mr. Campbell, are you part of this project?
Yes, Milford Excelsior. I mentioned that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Milford Excelsior LLC.
Thank you.
I'm not retired from that. I'm retired from my other occupation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
No more questions?
No, sir.
I'm going to go home, cut the lights on.
All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter?
Good evening, Chairman Underwood and members of the board. My name is John McGurdon. I'm from Essex County. I'm a forester, and I manage the timber for several of the landowners that are part of this solar project before you. I also serve on the Essex County Board of Supervisors. Tonight, I would like to make several points. First, I would like to convey that I respect a landowner's private property rights and that they should be able to manage their property for what they feel is best for themselves and for their families. Second, I have reviewed the solar plans and see that there are adequate vegetative scenic buffers along the roads, buffers to protect the streams and wetlands, and even corridors for wildlife. Third, I want to commend Caroline County for their due diligence in crafting and adopting ordinances and zoning rules for solar facilities. Essex County is in the process of doing the same, and we are modeling the good work that you have done. And finally, the thirteen to sixteen million dollars of revenue that will be generated from the solar facility will help to meet Caroline County's future needs of schools, social services, police, fire, EMS, libraries, and other quality-of-life needs for your citizens, with little or no need for long-term services from the county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter?
Good evening. Good evenings, supervisors. My name is Mary Hodge. I'm a Port Royal resident. I have written several letters that you've all probably seen, as well as circulated a petition with approximately fifty signatures of us opposing the approval of this project. So I will keep my comments brief, other than to say that approval of this special exception permit is-
Excuse me, Ms. Hodge. Didn't you speak at the last hearing?
No, sir.
Oh, this is different. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
That's where he's, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just to say that approval of this permit is wrong on many accounts. Environmentally, for example, misuse and exploitation of land and soil resources. The water runoff from this hilly property alone will create numerous problems, especially considering the fact that historically this land has been well-maintained in agricultural and woodland pursuits. There are also, there are a lot of neighboring properties that will be impacted by this, despite the applicant's statement that it is very remote. There is also, there also will be a lot of daily traffic traveling Page Road, Woodford Road during construction, as stated in the packet. In other counties, their roads have been ruined by all the construction traffic, traveling back and forth daily on those, on our roads. And this is just my one question. I'm speaking from the heart. And is this the legacy that you want to leave, not only to your children, but to your grandchildren as well? I just hope you think about it. And two other points. Watching the news tonight, there was a report on Channel Twelve that many acreage of U.S. lands had been taken over by foreign interests. So I'm just concerned, is Caroline County going to be the new China? Is there, will there be a land takeover with all this solar energy? And one other matter, that the Planning Commission did vote on this back in their session, and it was a tied vote, and I'm not sure how quite fair that was, because there were only four representatives there to vote and not the full six. Anyway, thank you for your comments. I appreciate you hearing them. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Hodge. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter?
Hello. My name is Jill Burns. I'm in the-
Ms. Burns. Is it right? Jill Burns.
Yes.
Thank you.
I know that this land is owned by John Burke. He has much, a lot of land. It buffers up to mine. There, I do not want a solar complex next to my land. The comment that they made about the passages for the animals to go back and forth, they cannot live on these trails. They have to be able to reproduce, have their natural lifespan, and it's not on trails or pathways. I realize that it's not just a narrow trail, but they need the land that they're used to having. My neighbors, they do not want this in their backyard. One of my neighbors is, lives right on the road that goes back to his land on Page Road, and he has logged this land there about, I would guess, fifteen, twenty acres, which is his right to do, but it looked mature, like it should be time to do. But it's like everything's being prepared ahead of time. I think this has been in the works for a long, long time, and nothing has been said to the people who live on Page Road. There's a lot of people who live on Page Road, and there's a lot of people who are impacted on this. When I was here for the Planning Commission, and they were saying how much money Caroline would get in taxes, I could see the eyes just pop out of a few heads on that commission. I mean, this is a rural community. It should stay as rural as it could be, and having these solar panels come in, and they scrape the topsoil off, this is what I heard at the Planning Commission, they put it in a pile, and that pile of topsoil is supposed to be respread over the land, this is what they said, after they're done. Well, how long does a pile of topsoil stay? In thirty, fifty years? It's not going to be there. It's going to be gone. The glass, which was mentioned before, I know is made with caustic materials. This land right now is beautiful, and it is, it is a farm right now. There is land being used for crops. He's growing trees. He has signs on his farm, tree farm. He calls it a tree farm. It is a farm.
Thirty seconds, Mr. Burton.
But it's not going to be a farm when all this stuff is on there. I don't want it there. The heat, there's supposed to be like nine hundred degrees off of these glass panes that are killing the birds. The heat, they'll fly over it, and I, this is from a fish and wildlife, what I read. I'm not making this up. And they kill the birds. The feathers catch on fire from the heat. I mean, there are birds. There are hawks. We have eagles. We have all kinds of birds flying around there. The geese, the Canadian geese, that's a natural fly path there to the pond, which is on the back of my property. I moved here from Florida. I've lived all over the eastern seaboard, and we chose to live here because this is country.
Could you close, please?
I just want you all to know that this is not a farm, as they like to say. This is a factory. This is a factory, and we do not need a factory in our backyard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burton. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? If there are others who wish to speak, would you just come forward and have a seat on the first row so we could?
Good evening, members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is John Burke. My wife, Kathy, and I live in the Port Royal District. We are associated with family land that will be involved with this project of CC Solar that is before you tonight. In addition, my wife and I have our home on farmland and forest land that will be next to the proposed project. In fact, our favorite walking trails will be next to the proposed substation, the proposed transmission lines, and the proposed solar panels for more than nine football fields in length. So we will be neighbors of this project, and we're here tonight to speak in favor of it. Solar energy has a role in our state's future fulfillment of its energy needs. Solar will not replace fossil fuel, but will allow our power supply to be less reliant on fossil fuels, and that is a good thing for all of us. Solar will be good technology for Caroline County. Once installed, it is a clean, passive technology. In addition, solar technology in Caroline may attract other desirable technologies as improved internet access could follow it. Also, we may get a data center because of it. We cannot turn our back on this new and exciting opportunity for Caroline. Kathy and I are committed to the rural character of Caroline County. We have made Caroline our home for over thirty-four years. During that time, we've paid taxes here. We've voted here. We've sent our three children to the public schools here, and Kathy has taught and worked in the school systems. Moreover, we plan to stay here. We support the solar project as a way to bring substantial new revenues to meet Caroline County's budget needs and to bring new technology to Caroline. We expect and understand that the solar company and this project will be in full compliance with the solar ordinance, and as such, they will be good neighbors to us and to others in the county. We have been approached by a number of solar companies. In selecting this solar company, we met many times with their principals, visited numerous solar sites, obtained references, and conducted other due diligence. We selected this solar company to work with because they've done other projects in Caroline. They understand a rural community, and they appeared committed to being a good neighbor. The ability of our family to hold land together-
Thirty seconds, Mr. Burton.
Thank you. The ability of our family to hold land together over the long haul requires much cost, much expense and effort. In our opinion, solar technology will be the help, will be helpful in maintaining the rural character of Caroline. Solar can be the glue that allows us to hold the rural landscape intact. This project's footprint is remote. There is a large amount of open space for water quality, soil management, wetlands protection, and wildlife habitat. Thank you for your time and consideration on this project. We support the approval of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Last time, anyone who wished to speak regarding this matter? Seeing no one coming forward, this public hearing is closed. Board?
Mr. Chair, I'm moving.
Yeah, I got five minutes for the vote, I thought. Mr. Proch, you have five minutes to make additional comments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate the folks that came up tonight to express their support as well as some of their concerns. I appreciate those. For many, this is a new technology and unknown, and I can appreciate the concerns they have. And I'd like to address just a few points that were made, and then I'd also like to give my last couple of minutes to Cutter to address the stormwater management and erosion control measures. Specifically, it was commented about, or there was a concern about us using a well. I just want to be clear that we do not intend to draw any water from the site. We would be bringing water in for any water needs that we have during construction for, like, dust control. We also, as was speculated by the lady from Spotsylvania County, we will not be leasing the land. We will be purchasing the land. In addition, she commented about the hazardous nature of the panels. Panels are not hazardous waste, and they can be recycled or disposed of in a typical solid waste landfill. And then also, just to remind everyone about the amount of acreage, about seven hundred acres, that would be inclusive of wetlands, buffer setbacks, and steep slopes. And then the last thing, point I wanted to address was, there was a concern about the high degree of temperatures. I think that's really more associated with what's called concentrated solar, which is entirely different technology, not associated with the type of technology that we're talking about here, and there's really no impact to the ambient air temperatures from this technology. I'd just like to turn the rest of the time over to Cutter to talk about stormwater management.
Thank you. Your name, please.
Good evening. Cutter Sidner. I'm working with Rob in Urbangrid. Thanks for giving me a couple of minutes at the end here. Board members, I want to give a couple high-level overview points to the erosion control and stormwater management that's been a big topic, and we heard it come up a couple times today. We have perimeter ditches that collect our runoff. We have basins within the site that capture, detain, settle out sediment, sediment, excuse me, and then release runoff, equal or improve from the runoff that is coming- equal or improve from the runoff that is coming off the site today. That's the runoff from the forest condition, from the agricultural condition that exists. All of our onsite water is captured and goes through those steps before being released directly into receiving systems, the wetlands, the streams, roadside ditches, that sort of thing with these calculations. We are not permitted by DEQ Stormwater Code to release water onto neighbors in uncontrolled manners or without a conveyance system. So I just want to address that point that came up a couple of times. We have multiple levels of county and state review of this design, multiple inspection levels during construction. We do use the flattest upland parts of the site to minimize grading and minimize moving around this topsoil, which I think the topsoil is not stockpiled for decades. That's stockpiled if needed and then spread back on the site during construction as the last step of stabilization to seed. And then last point I'll just make, we have deep-rooted, long-term ground cover. So we have a meadow-like ground cover that's established when the project's built. That combined with the extensive runoff management and the buffering that's above and beyond the civil culture and agriculture practices today results in a county code compliant, state regulation compliant, and improved water quality scenario, both on the project and for its downstream neighbors. I had a few points in there and some pictures of some solar sites that I've been to, some that I've designed. I've worked on solar for many years on the civil engineering world. And I'll just point out as the last point that there are several examples of these sites, dozens now, as we go into 2022, that are operational, that are quiet and that are successful. And behind the scenes, I'll say, because of the screening and the vegetation that's out front that shields them from almost all public eye. There are a lot of these sites that make the news and things that come up. But I'd encourage you to visit some of these, consider that. You have a very strong ordinance and you put in a lot of thought and time to that to make sure you can reap the benefits of these projects while addressing the civil, stormwater, erosion, and other issues with these projects in a successful manner to make sure they're implemented to the county's benefit and with the health and safety and welfare of the citizens in mind. Happy to take questions as well and appreciate your time tonight. Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Mr. Sidner. All right, Board members, how do we wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair, I would move that special exception 04-2021 being deferred to the board's meeting on May the 10th, 2022 in order to provide time to review possible DEQ and EPA water quality discrepancies and any relevant general assembly action on solar projects.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion that we continue this until May 10th meeting. Defer to. Defer to May 10th meeting so that we can look at the DEQ and EPA regulations and as well as general assembly information. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? This will be deferred until May 10th. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Words to our mark. Can we take a brief break?
Yeah, sure. All right, we'll take a ten-minute break and come back and start on RZ 2021, Dr. Horton owner. I said, I held that up. You guys didn't see this at nine thirty. We'll call the Caroline County Board of Supervisors meeting back to order. Next on the agenda is RZ 07, 2021, Dr. Horton owner applicant.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Yes, sir.
Your next public hearing is a request for a proffer amendment from Dr. Horton. They actually purchased the Maple Grove property from the previous developer who prepared the original proppers that were accepted by the board. Dr. Horton is asking for some modifications to those proppers to modify the language so that it actually reflects what is in the Federal Housing for Older Persons Act as well as the Virginia Fair Housing Act. So the change is basically clarify that at least one person would have to be fifty-five or older for eighty percent of the dwellings. So for example, if I'm fifty-five under the current proffer and my wife is fifty, then in theory, we could not buy into this community. So that clarification is an example would address that issue within this community. It also clarifies or addresses that at least eighty percent of the dwellings are intended to be occupied by the fifty-five and older community. And it also clarifies that a person under the age of nineteen can only be occupy a dwelling for not more than ninety days. I think the big concern in this project when it was approved was the potential school age impacts. And I think that's still addressed by these amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Fincham. Is the applicant here? Do you have anything you want to present to us before we open up a public hearing?
No, sir. Just Michael Hare here with Dr. Horton.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now open the public hearing for RZ 07, 2021, Dr. Horton owner applicant. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Last time, is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Seeing no one coming forward, the public hearing is closed. Board members, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Sealy.
You know, when we approved this, I asked our attorney, could this be a hundred percent fifty-five plus? And I was assured that that language was fine at the time, and Mr. Emerson was sitting here when we did this. So because my question was, who actually makes sure that this is 55 plus? Who's responsible? Because I didn't want the county to have to go check every sale of every house to make sure that it was compliant. So I'm at a loss as to why we had legal counsel, and this isn't that long ago, this is three years ago, that we approved this, and here we are. It gets sold, and now all of a sudden, Fair Standard, Fair Standard Act or Fair Labor, Fair Housing says that this isn't legal, and I really want to know how we got here.
I'll address from the planning side, and I'll let Mr. McKenzie address the legal side. Proffer conditions, when you accept a proffer, the proffers can be more stringent than otherwise required by your regulations or law. I think the question is, does it run afoul of a state law? But I think it was everybody's understanding at the time that yes, the county could accept a proffer as a voluntary condition that it says everybody has to be 55 or older. I don't think either set of regulations allows somebody under 19, which is referenced in both proffers, to be domiciled here permanently, to basically be a permanent resident of the county. So understanding that from a school age impact, I don't think these amendments affect school age impact at all. I think under either scenario, somebody under the age of 19 couldn't reside permanently in a dwelling here. But Chris, I'll let you answer the other.
Yeah, I think Mr. Fincham kind of addressed what I was going to say. Certainly, I can talk to Mr. Emerson about this and get his direct report to you. Sounds like he was the one that looked at this, but yet these are proffers, and so they come from the applicant. And so I think we reviewed them to see if they were acceptable, permissible, but we can't tailor them because they have to be voluntarily submitted by the applicant, unlike a special exception. And so if the applicant wanted to make a more restrictive proffer at the time, that's acceptable. If it was, as I think what's happening now is that maybe the language the applicant chose was intended to just track the FHA but did not do that, and that's trying to be corrected. That's fine, but again, these are proffers that are submitted by the applicant in a rezoning. But and if you would, Mr. Sealy, like me to consult with other members of the firm and report back on the specific analysis, I'd be happy to do that.
Well, it just seems like we just keep getting proffers that come back. This has been sold. Everybody was aware what the proffers were when it was sold. I'm assuming they had attorneys, the seller had attorneys, everybody knew what they were buying. That's how I view this. So we keep getting this, we want to change the proffers, we want to change the proffers, and that's how it was approved. So you knew what you were buying when you bought it.
Mr. Sealy, you have representative of the applicant here. You're right. I mean, the proffers were there. We have a proffer amendment. As staff, we can't deny an applicant the opportunity to request an amendment to the proffer. So, you know, perhaps they can speak to.
I'd love to hear the applicant tell me why we should change something that they bought.
Before that, can I just ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
This isn't an issue with that we're out of compliance with the law, correct? This is cleaning up language to make it more practical?
It's a request from the applicant to track it, to make it, I believe, tracks more closely with the Fair Housing Act.
That's just an agreement of language, but we're not, we haven't violated any law, any fair housing laws because we accepted a voluntary proffer?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that.
Good evening. So this is our request. I think mainly just to, kind of like Mike was speaking to, the fact of, so if somebody comes in there and they're 55, but like you said, their wife is 54, that completely prohibits them from purchasing one of these houses. So to kind of ease up on the, you know, those guidelines and it's just, it's a request that we think is a fair ask.
This is the second time we've had a change to this project. Is that not true?
I'm unsure. I'm.
The configuration and the number was changed. The configuration that was actually approved was changed just recently. So, I mean, we're getting this in dribs and drabs.
Yes, the configuration was changed from a townhouse type setting to a duplex type setting. That's correct.
So, but my point is, we've had one set of changes. Here's another set of changes. I agree.
What is, just out of curiosity, what is happening over there right now? I mean, what's going on? Because it's, anytime I drive by there, there was all kinds of activity, and now there's nothing.
So D.R. Horton has purchased from the original developer, and coming into this community, we think that a duplex layout and 55 and older community just works better for this area.
Mr. Black, really, we should stick to the.
Yeah, I was just curious.
But that is kind of outside the scope that we are discussing. They're asking for a proffer change.
I was just wondering what was happening with the project, yeah.
But that should, no way.
This is, I have no problem, and I'll go ahead and.
I mean, you can ask another question. I just want to make sure we don't.
No. I have a.
I have a question.
Long has a question.
The original property for it was sold, was it still the 80/20, 80% of the dwellings? Was it at least 55, or was it all the dwellings 55 and over?
The original proffer said all of the units were 55 plus, so everybody moving in had to be at least 55. The requested change would be 80/20, which is actually.
One person, right? Only one person in the household had to be.
20% in theory could be less than 55, but you don't have any permanent school age children. The 80/20 ratio, I believe the way it's written is 80% has to have at least one occupant that's over 55.
But originally, it was everyone had.
Originally, 100% had to be over the age of 55. That's correct.
Okay.
In the proffers that are in place right now.
So what they're asking for is a change to the percentages and the age, but the age is, the age is just for the 19 for not being there more than 90 days in a year.
Right. The way it's written now, it says it can't be domiciled or live there. I think you can make the argument that a grandchild visiting their grandparent doesn't live there, but I think that change cleans up any question that might arise as to whether, for example, a grandchild visiting becomes a resident.
I don't have any problem with a child being able to come and visit for a few days as long as they're not living there for a period of time, which I don't know how you're going to control. I do have problems with changing from 80, from 100% 55 to 80/20, because to me, that's a total change of character.
Mr. Foy, you had a comment?
Mr. Fincham, sorry to keep having you get up, giving your steps for the day. On the Maple Grove, on the cut-up version, actually both versions, there's a paragraph that was added, "In the event the above referenced proffer amendment is not granted as applied for the property owner." Starts with that.
That's standard language that they're making the proffer statement.
Okay.
They have to agree to any changes that the board makes. If you vote to amend the proffers as proposed, then it's not binding on them to accept those changes. Basically, that would then revert back to the proffers that are in place now.
Okay. But if we make changes that they're refined with?
Yes.
Okay. Because I understand the wife or husband is five years less, you know, whatever. I think that's reasonable. I understand the caregiver scenario, and I think that's reasonable. I don't really care for the 80%, but I think there's an in-between to what we had originally and then what's written here to allow for the practical matters, but not necessarily throw the door open as much as what it is with these. And that's, that's what I'm, I feel like there's a middle ground that's different than what I see here. And I'm not getting my, the definition of residing, you know, visiting your grandparent for a month. Colleges would, and the state generally have a different definition of that, so that doesn't really concern me in that respect. So anyway, that's my comment, and.
Mr. Thomas?
We could something in between that.
I think that was kind of my question. We can accept or change part of the proffers and not have to accept all of these changes.
Except then the applicant reserves the right not to. I think the applicant has to agree to any changes that the board would suggest. I don't think you can make those changes without the concurrence of the applicant.
Oh, I see the lawyer getting up.
Yeah. So like with a normal, you know, rezoning with proffers, you can not accept proffers. So if you got a list of 10 proffers from the applicant, you could say, I'm not going to accept number 10, but I'm going to, you know, vote on it with 1 through 9. In this instance, because really we're just amending a proffer, I think that you can state, you know, I have issues with this language, and I don't, you know, this isn't something I want to, I'd want to accept, or, you know, this is, but it's up to the applicant. Just like at the beginning, it's up to the applicant to say, this is the proffer that I'm submitting, the amendment language that I'm submitting.
Now, before you go, let me ask you a legal question. Normally, we don't negotiate proffers.
Correct.
Because they're voluntary.
Correct.
Hypothetically, if I was to say, I like the change in age, I like the change in 19 years old, but I don't like the 80/20 change, could I change the proffers in that case?
You can say that those, you have concerns about the 80/20, and it's up to the applicant to decide whether or not they want to change their position or not.
So the applicant could get two out of three, or then have nothing.
Sounds like a Meatloaf song.
Sounds like a what? A Meatloaf song? Yeah, I don't really, he just passed, so I don't. He can either accept two.
That's what I'm.
Or that went to the original. That was the point.
And just for a bit of background on this, you know.
Not too much.
Not too much, I know.
Oh, is that I love you, I want you, no, I want you, I need you, but ain't no way I'm ever going to love you, is that it?
Are you just talking about?
I got kind of stuck on the two out of three. It was a long time ago, thank you.
So, you know, I think what's going on with this is normally, you know, under FHA, you cannot discriminate with housing. You can't say people of only a certain age are allowed to live in this community, just like you can't say if you're in a protected class or something, out of a religion, you can't live in this community. That's illegal. So what this is doing is saying, if you are a particular type of community, a 55 and up community, you can exclude people that are under 55 if you meet certain HUD guidelines and FHA guidelines. And so that's where the 80% comes from, because HUD says, in order to meet those guidelines, you have to have at least 80% of the units occupied by one person that's 85 and older, right? So that's coming from HUD.
That's 55.
Sorry, 55. 55. Yeah, that one's. And so, you know, what happened with this other proffer is that proffer didn't track the HUD language as precisely, and it excludes even more. It's not just at least 80%, it's more. And so, you know, the question you're being asked is, do you want to let them go and track more directly with this federal and state law? Or do you want to rely on the existing proffer? And again, that language comes from the applicant.
Mr. Fincham?
Yeah, Mr. Black.
So on the 80/20, I'm just going to give you a hypothetical, so I understand this. So there's 10 dwellings, okay? And there's two people per dwelling. Okay, that's. Is the way it's written now, eight of the 10, so can they sell to someone? So if, let's say that there's eight dwellings that you have 55 and over, can they sell to two people now with under this 80%? Can they sell to the two dwellings that are the last 20%? Can they be people that are 30?
They could be 30 or 40. I think the way as the law is written, it says at least 80% has to have one occupant over 55.
So technically, I mean, okay.
Can I add one thing? I know you don't want to hear from me anymore, but, you know, remember that.
That is classic.
Yes. That you've got, that federal and state law, that applies regardless of this.
Yeah, right. Oh, no, I understand.
So they have, you know, if we have a separate section that's over and above that, you know, that could be a violation of their rezoning, but they still have to comply with the HUD and the state, the minimum HUD guidelines.
So right now, the current proffer has to be 100%, right? The current proffer is at 100%.
100% of the residents have to be 55 or older.
So what we're saying right now is if someone is, like you said, made the same, if someone's 55 and they're married to someone who's 52, they can't move in there.
Correct.
So we're limiting about the people that can actually move in there.
You're limiting a fair, yes, fair percent.
And so what are we going to do to enforce this? We going to knock on doors and say, you 55? I mean, are we going to do that? Are we just going to go house to house with the police?
The way they're set up, it's typically enforced by the homeowners association. Covenants and restrictions and documents is where the restriction lies. So part of the enforcement would be, we would rely on the HOA.
Technically with our, so technically with our proffer now, if the HOA doesn't enforce, it's just like, it's kind of like go around Lake Caroline, Lake Bando right now. How many people have license plates that say Wyoming or Minnesota or whatever? Come on now. There's a reality behind it.
And we would operate on a complaint basis. So somebody called and said, hey, somebody is living there, then we would have to go investigate that complaint. That's correct.
All right. I mean.
The one person we have to do that.
To me, we're splitting hairs here. I mean, this is insanity that we're even, I mean, we've talked about, now I know one person didn't vote for, we talked about a motel or whatever it was that was falling down tonight, we approved it. And now we're talking about 80/20, whether they're 55, 52. I mean, this to me doesn't even make sense that we're even debating this. So I'm going to move. I'm going to move for approval of the, basically of the amendment to the existing proffers of Maple Grove subdivision as seen in this packet. Right now. Mr. Fincham, I have one last question. If that's appropriate, Mr. Chairman.
Can you repeat that, please? I'm sorry.
I just had a quick question. Mr. Black made a motion, I'm not sure it's appropriate, may I ask a question?
Mr. Black, can you repeat your motion?
I'm going to, I'm going to move that we approve the amendment of the existing proffer for Maple Grove subdivision as seen in the packet.
The second by?
Hasn't been seconded.
Has not been seconded. All right, there's a motion.
The motion just dies. You can go to questions again.
Mr.
I mean, I'll second the motion to get it on the floor for discussion if that's what we need.
All right, there's a motion and a proffer second that we approve the amendments to the proffers. Discussion, forehand.
If Mr. Motion, if Mr. Black's motion dies, can another version be brought back and we vote on that next meeting?
Yes.
Do you vote on it tonight?
You can do a motion tonight if you want.
Or we don't have the language to to vote anything different to vote on.
But in that case, yes, we could go back, have discussions with the applicant and potentially bring back.
So it's not like a a rezoning or that it's won and been done for a year.
Unless there's, yeah, unless there's a motion.
Right, you're right there.
Yeah, unless there's a motion to deny or the the motion, there's a, you know. You you can move to the front.
Because this will kill it for a year if we vote.
If we deny it.
If we deny it, right.
But his motion is to approve.
We can. We can amend the you can make you can amend that she can amend the emotion, the emotion, you can amend the motion tonight. If this dies, you can put another amendment, I mean, another motion this evening.
Someone from the winning side can also bring it back up.
Right.
You would need.
So do you have a different language? I guess, Mr. Paul, I have my question. Do you have a different motion that you'd like to present?
I I think you should take one one motion at a time.
Right, I'm just asking you. Right, I understand that. So let me finish my question. Are you thinking about another motion?
I just think that there's some middle ground between where we were and where we what we have in front of us.
Right, then I'll call for.
That I would like to pursue.
All right, so there's a motion and a second. Are we doing discussion?
I was just gonna say, my problem with the motion is that there is a need for fifty-five and older. And here you're getting, you're taking twenty percent of that away. But you only have to have one person fifty-five, then you can go all the way down the the charter, as long as they're not staying there permanently if they're under nineteen. So uh, I just think we need as many fifty-five and older developments this weekend.
So there is a motion. Before you call a question, Mr. Chairman, a point of order. Do you think we ought to have the public hearing first?
We did have, we did have.
We did have a public hearing.
Nobody spoke.
Nobody spoke.
My bad.
We can have a second one again, but no one speaks.
Well. I did that already. Okay, so there is a motion and a second that we accept the proffers as amendment by the applicant. I know. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, division in the House, Mister Forehand.
Nay.
Mister Black.
Aye.
Mister Sealy.
Nay.
Mrs. Long.
Nay.
Mister Thomas.
Aye.
Mister Underwood.
Nay.
Motion is defeated four two. So it stands as it is right now.
Yeah, you 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 need you need to pass a motion to take an action. So you you could make a motion, you could move to deny and.
Make a motion, we defer to the next meeting.
I thought I thought it goes back to the original proffer since we didn't we didn't.
The the motion to approve the change has been.
Denied.
Has failed.
Failed, right. So doesn't it revert back to the original proffer?
It can, or we can motion to defer it to the next meeting and perhaps have a different version to vote on either way.
If you want.
So now that it's failed, what's the proffer in the?
Right now, it's it it's as is. You 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 don't have a path amendment.
Saying.
Yeah, that's the status quo. Yeah.
That's right. It's as it is in is written now as now. We can vote to defer. We can vote to for another motion.
Yeah, but that.
Correct.
We can vote to deny, which would end it.
Yeah.
End it for foreseeable future, or we can vote to vote to defer, which would give us time to maybe have another version to look at.
That's your choice.
I make a motion that we defer to the next meeting. I'll second.
There's a motion and a proper second that we defer the proffer um question to the next meeting. All in favor, say aye. No discussion, first, I'm sorry, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it will be deferred into our next meeting. Eyes have it. All right. Move on to unfinished business. Agenda item number nine. Special exception zero six twenty-one.
It's over there.
Garrison, uh, Melvin and Katrina, owner, well-known solar LLC. This is a continuation, I believe, also. I need to see if anybody wants to speak.
No, we're we're. We don't need mic or anything. No. Uh, Mister Chair, I moved that special exception application oh six two zero two one. Let that be deferred to our board's meeting on May the tenth, twenty twenty-two, to in order to provide time to review possible DEQ and EPA water quality discrepancies and other relevant general assembly actions on solar projects.
There's a motion that we defer until uh special exception zero six twenty twenty-one until our May tenth meeting due to um questions from DEQ and discrepancies, I would say, between DEQ and EPA as well as looking for general assembly guidance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This this is deferred until May the tenth. Item number ten, review of comments uh contained in the management letter for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Audit, Miss Smith.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and members of the board. At our last board meeting, Jason Udo from Robinson Farmer Cox Associates presented the annual comprehensive financial report and audit findings for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Tonight, I will provide updates to the management letter comments where there are opportunities to strengthen the county's internal controls and operating efficiencies and where we currently are along the way. The first comment was in regards to uniform guidance policies. Um, the auditors stated that the county and school board written policies should be updated. And speaking with Mrs. Stevens, CCPS had their second reading and approval by the school board of the policy updates to include the uniform guidance language at their July twelfth, twenty twenty-one meeting. She also noted that the auditors had confirmed that all policies required to be updated with the uniform guidance information had been completed as of that meeting date. The county, however, has not completed such policy updates and intends to to do so prior to the close of this fiscal year. The second comment was in regards to the Board of Supervisors Minute Book. Auditors are recommending that minute that meeting minutes be drafted, approved by Board of Supervisors and signed on a more concurrent basis. Draft minutes were available to the August meeting and approved during the November meeting, the meeting after the auditors were here. This is an improvement over past years, and we continue to strive to improve in this area. A full-time employee has been requested by county administration in this current and fiscal year twenty-three budget, in which these duties would fall under that person's responsibilities. The third comment was in regards to the treasurer on outstanding checks remaining on the bank reconciliation greater than a year. And speaking with the treasurer, they are working to get checks remitted as unclaimed property and have turned over fifty-nine checks this past November. The school continues to review their outstanding checks, and they currently have about five to six that are still remaining. And the treasurer feels confident that these will be cleared up this year. The next item was drawdown of funds to reimburse county. Um, this includes the lease purchase escrow accounts that need to be drawn down. This is due to several items. Um, what we are currently dealing with most is a delay of purchases due to supply shortages. And we are facing crunches as far as time and staffing is concerned. But finance is currently fully staffed. And however, our focus has been on implementing the Keystone software. We hope to have some of this resolved this year. The next one was in regards to general ledger and reporting. The auditors are requesting separate receivable balances for local, state, and federal sources. In coordination with the treasurer, we will review this comment. However, at this time, those balances are not separated due to um the fact that they are quite immaterial. Therefore, in our opinions, we don't warrant that the that we use separate accounts. The next comment was in regards to social services. And it was noted that a DSS supervisor was not marking the case action report as approved or rejected for payment. And speaking with Mrs. Tyree with DSS, the supervisors were advised while the auditor was there to check the approved boxes, and they continue to do so. She also noted that the that the agency does not issue a case action unless services have been approved. The next item was in regards to the budget. Um, the auditors noted that we should review and reconcile the posting of the original budget. Our budget will be compiled in our now Keystone system once it is fully implemented. And fiscal year twenty-two has been uploaded from a file to direct upload during implementation. The last items classified as other were visible cancellation of individual paid vouchers that has been rectified with the Keystone software. Update to written policies to include personnel and travel policies. That is um an item that continues to be worked on by HR. And the county's Walmart card and Visa card, um, it needed to be eliminated since we were using P cards. And those have both been closed this month. And that concludes um my update on the management letter comment.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board regarding um audit comments? Uh, except to say, as usual, Miss Smith, you've done a great job.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Miss Smith.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, under new business, um, requests from the county support for the George Washington Regional Commission Housing Grant. Caroline Habitat for Humanity. Mister. I would think little Jason. Mister Colley, are you doing it?
I guess Alan's doing it.
Mister Chairman, members of the board, you you have an overview of the requests in the board packet. I unless in the interest of time, unless there are any questions of me, I I'll turn it over to Jason Tickle to uh get into the particulars of the request, but we have uh tried to uh give you a sense of what they're requesting and the feasibility of it in the board packet memo. And again, we'll be happy to answer any questions after he finishes his presentation.
All right. After Mister Tickle, or evening, I should say.
Hi, thank you, uh, Mister Chairman and Board of Supervisors. Uh, appreciate your time and appreciate your support over the last few years. So we are wrapping up our first grant cycle, getting ready to start our second. Um, and uh, and we really nailed the the last one out of the park. USDA is very happy. And in fact, they would like us to build more homes um and do repair programs. So we're working towards that. But uh, we have a great local opportunity that uh doesn't have as many strings attached to a lot of the funding that we go after, that we believe that we are positioned to really step in and use this funds to provide a lot of opportunities for the citizens of Caroline to build affordable housing. And so what we're asking for is to help us make the best proposal possible, which is due actually this Friday. A six-page proof of concept in which we are asking the county to provide some support uh so that we can get the edge over our uh competitors that will be only from our region. Um, so that's essentially what we're looking for today. And there's two ways that I uh had proposed and uh that that I think would be helpful. And I'm certainly open to more opportunities if other ideas are there. But um several years ago, uh, myself and others, we petitioned the state to allow localities to donate uh properties to housing organizations if they have them on their registers um that were foreclosed. Or another option is if somebody's getting ready to go into foreclosure, the county can say, hey, if you donate this property to a nonprofit housing organization, we will waive these fees and take it off of your credit report. So there's two avenues, uh, according to my understanding of the 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 laws that you can go. If that's not available, which I understand it may not be, because uh Sands Anderson, I understand auctions off properties um likely do for the whole district. But another opportunity to show that the community wants it and supports it would be maybe waive some connection fees or something. And so really, it's it's a it's a symbolic gesture that shows the reviewers that will be awarding the grant that it is wanted and that there are other resources that are being poured into it. I believe that we already have the best proposal in the region due to the fact that we are uh the only USDA five twenty self-help grantee in the state, in fact, only one of two habitats in the nation. So I believe that our proposal is is gonna, you know, be the best. But from my experience, if we can show community buy-in by the things I'd mentioned, it does uh help the reviewers kind of make their suggestions to George Washington Commission. From my understanding, and I was actually invited to serve on that review selection for another planning district. I had to decline because of time, but from my understanding, people like in my role um or other housing groups will potentially review these and make suggestions to GWRC. So I'm just trying to make sure that we have the best proposal possible so that when GWRC awards it, uh, we will have, you know, an edge against uh our competitors. And I hate to call them competitors, but hey, we're all going after the same funds.
Thank you, Mister Tickle.
Yes.
Any questions, board members? Mister Forehand.
Who are your peers doing similar work?
Um, so I got a letter from uh from the Northern Virginia region and basically saying that, hey, you know, you're a nonprofit housing, you write grants. Uh, would you be willing to uh, you know, perform reviews of some of the proposals? So um, so that's that's, you know, be like people at habitats or maybe you know, other housing organizations other than Habitat that are maybe more.
Like like Quinn Rivers or.
Exactly.
Okay, other organizations like that.
Yeah, it would be folks that don't serve our planning district. So I that's from my understanding, that's how it's gonna work, but.
I was asking more, you know, who are we in the running against?
Oh, okay, yeah.
We who are you, your organization?
Yeah, so like Fredericksburg Habitat, uh, I know MICA wanted to do a proposal to do a tiny house village. There was one group from Charlottesville that I think wanted to convert a hotel into.
Hostel.
Like apartments for veterans or something like that.
Okay.
And so, but then um GWRC would oh it was invite only. So I don't know who made the final list of who was invited to apply, but I do know that we were. So um, so I don't know exactly who made that cut, but but I know we are one of those.
Okay.
And really, if you look at the funding sources in the region, I don't think anybody else in the region has the resources to match that and deliver, you know, twenty homes, because you cannot build twenty affordable homes with two million dollars. It's impossible. So we would pair it with our self-help program um and the USDA five oh two program to deliver those homes.
Mister Black. Question. All right, Mister Sealy.
You don't think you can build twenty affordable homes for two million dollars?
Nope. So uh, only one point seven can be direct, you know, three hundred of that, you got some money for equipment, staffing, things like that. So but our average home, um, sticks and bricks is a little under two hundred thousand. Pre-COVID, pre-COVID, it was a little under a hundred and fifty. So. Uh, but we also have a greater demand for four-bedroom homes. So we would like to be able to start to build those, and we we believe we can deliver those for about two fifty. So just to give you context, a home payment for a three-bedroom, two-bath using our method, depending on the final terms they get, been depending on their income, would be between seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars a month. On our quarter-million-dollar home, four-bedroom model, it would be between eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and a thousand forty-nine dollars.
Is that is that escrow?
That's taxes and escrow.
That's taxes and escrow.
Yep.
For.
Yeah, I mean, it's it is a the USDA program is so underutilized. It's the best kept secret in rural America. It literally, you know, I mean, you can make seventy-two thousand and qualify for this loan. I mean, we can build for teachers, firefighters, policemen, retail managers, folks that normally couldn't afford. We can do it for them. And not only that, because of the price increase, I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna just, you know, leave out people that are in the below twenty-five grand. So I found other resources. So what we're doing now, if you're below twenty-five grand, we hook you up with FIDA. They save four grand, they get an eight-to-one match. That's thirty-two thousand dollars. So now. So now they only gotta borrow a hundred and sixty eight. So their pathway is a little longer, but we can still help them as well. But so our sweet spot is gonna be like twenty two thousand to seventy two thousand. That's our income range that we can really build affordable homes for using the various mechanisms that we've gathered and put in our tool belts.
And Mister Tickle, how how many homes have you guys built?
Ten.
You've you've completed ten and how many years?
Two, little over two. Actually about two and a half because we we dedicated them on December fifteenth. We officially signed our grant in summer of twenty nineteen, but we didn't actually start the homes until that fall.
So if you were to get this grant, approximately, how many homes do you think you could serve or build?
Well, we would meet the grant terms to build the twenty homes. So it would essentially overlap our next two grant cycles. Half of those homes would be delivered because the ones we're getting ready to start. We gotta start them before GWRC will make their decision. So the first year of my, you know, next grant, it's just gonna be pickup lots. But we've, you know, we've found other places that we can build. And so that's what we would propose to do while we're finishing those five homes. We would get our next development ready with that grant. So when we finish these five, we're about to start one year from now. Hopefully, you know, we would be starting that, you know, that to deliver those grants. Now, if GWRC comes through and approves, you know, this grant before March, we could include them in the next five homes we're gonna build. And I would love it if they did that, but I can't really depend on that timeline because I just don't know what it is yet. Because the USDA, I I'm under contract to them. We'll have to deliver twelve homes in two years. So that's kind of how the grant terms would work.
What's your time period yet to have those built?
It's a three year grant, but I do understand that clock has already started ticking. But I do believe you can ask for a year extension, but we don't feel we would need that. We think with the funds we have and the preliminary work that we've already done. We think we can hit the ground running pretty quick if we were to get awarded the grant.
Is that twenty plus twelve or?
The the.
The twelve is part of the twenty.
It depends on when GWRC would award it. If they award it before March, when we start our new homes, then that twelve would all count towards that first twenty. If it's gonna pass pass March, then out of the twelve, five would not count, seven would count. So then, you know, a year later, in our next grant cycle, we'd finish that up. And we also have the support of the USDA to the fact is. If I get more applicants that say, hey, we're ready. We can go back and amend it and so I can literally get more. But, you know, covid has has, you know, we just haven't had as many people apply as we had wanted to. Or people that are loan ready. So we got a pretty good pool of people that we have getting their credit ready, getting, you know, in place to do it. But we just, you know, originally, I wanted to do twenty homes with the USDA. But we just didn't feel comfortable in that. So after consulting them and also NCal, who's kind of our overseer, you know, they said, hey, it's it's maybe you should. You know, dial your homes back a little bit so you can make sure you just focus on, you know, building the program and and all of that stuff. So that's why this grant would really be wonderful because we would now have a second funding source. And it would bridge, it would essentially, you know, it would would really kind of the next two grant cycles. It would kind of, you know, provide me with with lands, with the, you know, everything needed to build. So it essentially would would set up the next three years of of our strategic plan to build houses, you know, here in Caroline.
So so if I meant, so all you're really asking for and and like you said originally. The county doesn't really have a lot of foreclosed properties. But based on your request, we could theoretically waive water and sewer connection fees. Well, right. We're not allowed to waive water and sewer. We we the county could reimburse you water and sewer fees, which would then be added to the grant application. So if we made an, I I guess, a motion or something that said we would do that, you could include that in your grant for Friday.
I would in my my proof of concept, when I lay out all my funding streams and how we're gonna pay for everything, that would be part of it. We would say, you know, the county is gonna provide this, you know, we're gonna get this many loans from the USDA and quitting to this much. You know, the USDA gives us this much per home that we deliver already. So we we kind of put the whole package together and then they would decide who has the best package.
All right, another question is, and I've I've been to, I guess, the last five houses that you've done.
Yep.
Which is which has been a great. You know, community project. I mean, the people that worked on you had churches and, you know, folks that work for the school system.
Yeah.
You know, they got a house, it it's it's really great and it's really a good thing to do in affordable housing. I I know that because the grant cycle was slower, you you lost one of your employees or or more than one of your employees because of the funding loss. I mean, if we if we helped that person work directly with the families. So would that be an extra advantage to your grant?
Certainly would, you know, it would show the the reviewers that that, you know, their county has skin in the game. You know, the main reason we did that, you know, was a strategic decision because of the fact that. When when we brought on additional staff, we raised a lot of money besides what the USDA gave us to build capacity. And and you guys all know capacity building is a tough endeavor. Add in the pandemic, it's even harder. So so we just didn't feel that we could go to the USDA with confidence. And my board, obviously, I answered to them and say, yeah, we'll sign on the dotted line and say we can do twenty homes. Because we just didn't feel confident in that. So because of that, we had to make tough decisions, you know, because we essentially lose thirty thousand dollars per home and operating funds. So when you cut down from twenty homes to twelve, that's a pretty big chunk of your operating expenses. So that was unfortunate that we had to do it and we had to make a tough decision, lay off or let go. We we ended up, we didn't want to ever hold anybody back from other opportunities, so we we had to make that decision. But if we get this GWRC grant, we would obviously have additional revenue for staff. And we would, you know, have to bring more staff on. So if if the county wanted to, you know, help with that until that point, we would definitely welcome that support. Just with the understanding that, you know, if if the GWRC grant doesn't go our way. We still have to operate on on the funds the USDA gives us, so we would have to, you know. That's just the bottom line, I have to operate on known known funds, yeah.
And that's your board president back there, right?
It is Stephanie Ball, yeah, and you guys all know Mac Wingway.
She was trying to be shy, so I just wanted to make sure she got some credit.
Yeah.
All right.
I think we should wait and see what they get from GWRC before we go into their funding stream for other people because it could be worse than that.
I think he doesn't he need this for to to strengthen your application?
Right.
So I need something, that's a separate issue. I need something to strengthen it. There's multiple ways you could do that. Like I said, I'm open to any ideas and and not just the ideas I put on the table. But, you know, like I said, reimbursement of the fees is certainly a good way. Paying a staff position is certainly a good way. I mean.
If we help you with a staff position and you got the grant, could you repay any of that help back?
Usually those grants do not let you do that.
Okay.
Like you you literally can only spend it from the date you sign it on certain, it's it's essentially, it's like restricted funds.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Chris.
Your your executive summary mentions that I was gonna talk.
I can't hear you.
The executive summary mentions that I was gonna talk to you a little bit about the donation of property option. And we looked at the statutes, we looked through the statutes to deal with those times of to cling with tax sales, which we do handle. And the one that I identified that specifically addresses this. That can can considers selling homes to nonprofits to construct. Selling property to nonprofits to construct homes on. It has a proviso that that only localities with a score of one hundred or higher on their fiscal stress index from. DHC D qualify for that provision. And I checked and and we we are fortunately below that. So we do not qualify for that provision.
All right.
So that would not not be workable. And then, you know, it's a it's a kind of baseline issue. If you were to do something like that, you would be, you would take title of the property, probably need to do all the normal things we do. We take title of property, title insurance, environmentals, then you'd be in the chain of title. It needs to be sold, not donated because the proceeds of that need to go to the owner. You know, if it's in excess of the tax that's owed. So I just wanted to clarify that for the board that I don't think from a legal perspective that would work.
Thank you, sir. Jason, how does, take me through the process where you find the 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 potential home buyer. Take me through that process, then what happens?
Sure, so people come through the door. And we tell them about our two pathways to homeownership. One is we are a loan packager. If you get approved from enough of a loan, you can actually just go to a real estate agent or a builder and get get your home. The loan max is three hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
And that comes and who? Puts that loan together for that person?
We do, my staff.
Is there a cost?
There is a, it it depends on the route they go, but for the loan packaging, yes, we charge fifteen hundred dollars. And we, you know, usher it through all of the things it has to goes through to make sure they're approved. Provide, you know, counseling if we need to to get them approved. So like, for example, if a person comes through my door at like mid thirties, if their debt to income ratio is right. And that isn't always the case, they literally can get enough of a loan that they can literally go to Maury Heights and buy a home. But I haven't had anybody come through do that yet, but I have, I have done some.
All right, so what's the other method?
The other method, if they do not get approved for the loan max, let's say they get two hundred grand. That's when we say, hey, this is our self help method. This is where you work with five other families to build your home with the community, more of the traditional habitat model. So by doing that, saving that labor, you know, their homes, they're paying for sticks and brick was which allows us to. To sell them substantially below market value. The last five homes, the lowest homeowner moved in with forty grand equity, the highest moved in with ninety thousand dollars equity. And that's what they get for essentially the sweat equity they put in because they do have to work. They put in thirty hours a week, them and their surrogates, I mean, it's.
So the difference in someone having forty thousand, forty K in equity and ninety K in equity is amount of time they're spending building the home?
It's really honestly about location and what it's appraised for in the area.
Okay.
So if, you know, if we build in one place versus another place, it might be the same house. But, you know, it it can just be based off of of, you know, the the appraisals.
Okay, I didn't know that there was, they had, they had personally had an impact on that equity.
No, no, it's a and and we try to give them choices with lots, you know, like, I, you know. You know, sometimes if they get approved for enough of a loan. You know, they might, we might say, hey, we have this lot, it's fifty grand. If they don't get approved for enough, hey, we have this lot, it's twenty five grand, you know, so that's gonna vary some as well. And all of our homes are age in place design. I'm excited, our next homes, we think are gonna actually win major awards. I gotta give Mac credit. I've been trying to figure out an age in place condition crawl space for ten years and he's figured it out. And we're excited because it's gonna allow people to live in their homes regardless of their age safely, securely. And it's just a phenomenal, phenomenal model. I mean, we really think that that we're gonna show the rest of the world that, hey, you can build these types of homes affordably. And, you know, and and meet the community's needs as as America ages. So we're really excited about these homes. It's it's really a fabulous home.
All right, Mister Chair, are you ready for a motion? Because I'd like to, you know, move forward. I I know we we have certain constraints, but I I think we we could at least reimburse water and sewer connections. And I'd like to see us do something else to help with the, you know, employees. Maybe we can do three or four months. And I know the the employee may not be retained if you don't get another grant. But would like twenty thousand dollars be too much? Because I I know we we pay for other directors, we pay for the Caroline's Promise Director. And this is a local person in the county, somebody we could, you know, work with. So I'd make a motion that we reimburse fees and provide up to twenty thousand dollars for. You know, additional funding for staff. There's a there's a motion that we reimburse connection fees as well as. Mister Colley, are you coming to interrupt? As well as provide twenty thousand per for employee fees. Staff hourly fees.
Would you add to that motion that it'll be appropriated from the ARPA funds or from the fund balance? It's got, the money's gotta come from somewhere.
I can do ARPA funds.
That's what I was.
Because they're because they're nonprofit. Why, why you told me that before I made the motion? I would have asked her more.
She said she has told you.
Yeah, she's told me a lot of stuff, she's right. Thank you, and I'll amend the motion to have it come from ARPA funds.
Arbor?
Arbor. American Family Relief Fund. That's the covid money. That's the covid money.
Second.
Second. So there's a motion that we, as I just read.
I'll second.
There's a.
One question, go ahead.
Discussion?
The only dilemma, I mean, if they build something in town, we can't really reimburse town water and sewer connections, can we?
I don't think we have the authority, but didn't you ask the town to do it already?
It has not in the town, it's outside.
Okay.
Is it?
It is literally, you could throw a baseball into the town, but it is outside.
So it's, is it, it's not part of our our water system?
I guess it's served by the town.
Yeah.
And town limits, if it's if it's on the.
If it's outside the town limits, it's county.
The reimbursement would be, we would have to write a check to the town of Bowling Green for whatever their water and sewer costs are. I mean, that's what we would have to do with this reimbursement is it would have to go into the utility fund for our for us. So if you you're gonna reimburse those, he's gotta pay him and then we've got to reimburse him. So he would, same thing with the town, he'd have to re pay the town one and you'd reimburse based on an invoice from the town that he paid the.
Well, we're gonna do the county part and and we're gonna ask Mister Tickle if he would talk to town council to make sure you could get a waiver from the town.
Okay.
I'm sure the town will go at least.
Just to clarify, we're voting on the water connection fee and the sewer connection fee.
Correct.
Correct.
And additional twenty thousand dollars for employees. For employees to bring back to employees. All right, there's a motion, proper second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, agenda, excuse me, discussion of allocation of fiscal year twenty twenty one and the year's school funds.
Right.
We can't do that control that, right? Yeah, one good thing on the county rate that we have a nonprofit rate we created years ago when I first got here. So it's fifty, I think about fifty percent of our regular rate. Mister Chairman, members of the board, the chair requested that we have a agenda item to discuss the remaining funds that were left over for the schools' funds. In the amount of six hundred ninety seven thousand. Gosh, this thing, seven hundred and thirty nine dollars as to what the the board intended to do or wants to do with those funds. Six hundred ninety seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty nine dollars that were remaining funds from FY twenty one.
This was part of discussion several months back, correct?
It's the audited amount. That was the June thirtieth ended now.
Yeah, where we'd we'd pulled out one point seven.
That was from before. That's that was that was twenty and nineteen and eighteen funds. This is twenty one.
Twenty twenty one.
One just just. Just one, it just ended June thirtieth.
Oh, okay.
And was just audited. This is the audited amount of remaining funds.
So Mister Colley, all monies left over in the year are going into the general fund?
They remained in a, that's more of a technical question, but yeah, I always consider it goes back to the general fund. It would have to be appropriated back to the schools for them to spend. It's currently in a.
No, 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 no. No.
I'm saying that it's right now just sitting there. It's in the school fund balance, but it's can be put back in our general fund balance. But the schools can't spend it even if it's in their fund balance because it had.
I want to make it clear, we're gonna put the money back into the general fund.
Do they need action?
Do they need action? You need an action to do that.
That's correct.
From the school's fund balance back into the general fund balance.
Okay, so this is reversion money.
Correct.
So did, did we ever decide when the joint meeting was with the schools? No, Mr. Cully's going on.
Oh, right, okay.
Alright, so what, what is, I need a motion to move that, those funds back into the general fund.
Right. I'll make the motion, we put it back in the general fund for now.
Second.
So there's a motion and a proper second that we move the funds back into the general fund, the six.
Quick discussion.
690, discussion?
Quick discussion. I mean, this, if, if they bring a project forward as, as they've done in the past, and we just choose to fund it, we can.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I asked when the joint meeting was.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. Move it back to the general fund. Item number 14, excuse me, item number 13. Discussion alternatives for Caroline County Social Services Board Administrative Board of Advisory. I asked Mr. Cully about this, bringing the social services board under the auspice of the county to make sure that they had, they reported to Mr. Cully. So in order to do that, because right now they don't report directly to Mr. Cully or.
No, as, as in the memo, there's two, two methods that.
Two methods, that's correct.
And they, I currently are administrative board, which Mrs. Long is our board member on that board, and that's who the director reports to.
So this will be making it a department of the county?
For the most part, yes. I, I would become the official board. And so currently, all personnel issues don't make it to the county. So that administrative board is the, the stop of there. So if there's a grievance, it never comes like a department where it comes all the way to me.
Are, are we held accountable for a grievance that's gone bad?
I would think so, yes. But I, I wouldn't say that you're not now, that if, if the administrative board doesn't do things right, then those things get overturned in court or whatever. So I don't think you're exempt, but I don't have the headache of dealing with it.
If we don't have any direct oversight, how can we?
You, you appoint the board.
Right.
Okay.
You have a, your direct oversight becomes a board of citizens with a, you know, with one supervisor, board, board member on it.
And the members aren't on the board.
And so you have that, you have that direct oversight, it's done by actual board of citizens, not staff, your professional staff.
Great. I'm just trying to process as my head how.
I understand.
Mr. Thomas?
It would still fall back, it's your responsibility.
Mr. Cully, you, you just said something. The director of social services reports to Mrs. Long because she's the board of supervisors representative?
No, the administrative board. She's our board rep on the social services board, which y'all all appoint the membership to.
Yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to clarify, because I, that was, that was news to me that our board appointee was responsible for the director.
The whole board.
Yeah, the director is responsible to the whole board, okay, okay. And, and it's been that way for 40-some years at least?
Since the creation, yes. It's only a few, I don't remember exactly how many administrative boards. I think I know of three or four.
But there haven't been any problems since you've been on the board, right?
I think there's a lot of good reasons. I really do think there's a lot of good reasons to consider taking the administrative board and turning it into advisory board. One thing is, we only meet every other month, and Mr. Cully is available all the time if an issue comes up. And it gives people a more direct point to contact admin to be directed someplace if they can't get through to somebody on the administrative board. And truthfully, meeting once every other month, it's really hard to get a feel, especially during this COVID time, because, you know, everybody's sort of a skeleton staff and people aren't mingling as much. I see a lot of good reasons for if something happens for Wendy to have.
Just come back. I, I'm, I'm going to be selfish, because I don't, I don't get enough of Mr. Cully's time as it is.
Right.
And I'm not going to want to share his time with social services.
Mr. Cully, how many employees are there in social services?
Uh, 30, 32.
So now you're going to take on.
35.
We're going to now take on 35 employees.
I didn't see you back there, okay.
So we're going to, we're going to go big government here, and we're going to take on 35 more employees that we don't.
I know.
Well, I understand it more as that Mr. Cully would be a focal point for the administrator, but Wendy would still have, Mrs. Sneed, excuse me, would still have.
Mr.
She would be the department head.
She would be the department.
She would be the department head like any other department we have, but he would still be, he was directly in charge of those employees, which he's not now. He's not directly in charge of those 35 employees right now.
Correct. If somebody has a problem there, I don't have anything to do with it.
I'm sorry?
Now we're going to add 35 more employees that he's in charge of.
Right.
So he has a department head.
I, that's, no. It's, it's, we haven't, we haven't had a problem. Why, why are we going to change now? You know, we had issues and, and those issues are gone.
Right now, if there's an HR problem, let's say there's a, a problem with an employee in, in social services, who, who deals with it?
Social services, up to the administrative board and state HR.
So under this situation, we would be.
If there was a problem, yes.
But if there is a problem, problem, we're only meeting every other month.
Maybe y'all should meet more than.
Well, that's possible.
Really, I mean, you know, meet by Zoom then. What, it's, it's, no.
Mr. Cully, what is the, just out of curiosity, what is the, I saw some writing here, what is the advantage of, what is the advantage of us taking it over versus? Yes. What is the advantage, if we take it over, what is the advantage?
I guess, as I pointed out in my memo, if you were having issues, you have some, you don't have a citizens board that's dealing with it, you have your staff that's dealing with it, which I have experienced in the past, but it's not what the experience is here currently. But it does give, I, I worked in a jurisdiction where my phone rang a fair amount about problems in social services with cases and employees and all kinds of things. I have not experienced that here.
Because it was directly, because you were directly.
No, because I wasn't, and I had to just keep telling them, you need to talk to.
Social services.
Social service board, and they would go, I talked to them and I don't like that.
All these people that are with social services, that are dealing with social services, now they can call, I mean, we're going to be, we're going to be getting phone calls about why.
You can still get them.
We can still get them, but it's very rare.
Supervisors, the administrative board, so if the administrative board's not working, then when they called me, I go, well, you'll have to talk to your board of supervisors. Remember, you, because I have no.
Broken.
Anything to do with it.
I can't believe we're going to go big government.
I have no issues here currently.
Right. Yeah, there's no way.
You don't have to vote on it.
I, I would like some more information and, and ask some questions. I, I, yeah, I'd, I'd say I would just soon leave it like it is. I'm, I'm not opposed to changing, I'm just, I want to have. Yeah, I like to defer it, and I hate to defer, and but I'm just not comfortable voting either way at this point, but.
Right, that's only two weeks away.
You, you can, yeah, I mean, you might as well write my no vote down in March, because I'm going to vote no in March, I'm going to vote no now. Alright. It's a waste of time. Floyd says it's a waste of time. Doesn't make it so, but that's his opinion. Yep, everybody's right, you've got a right to an opinion. We're going to move this, we're going to defer this till the first meeting in March.
Yes, sir.
Do you need a motion for that?
No.
No.
Everybody agree?
No, no motion necessarily.
I don't, I don't think so.
I don't think so.
We'll put it back on the agenda in March. It's not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing or an applicant. This was, it was put on by the chairs.
And it may turn out that we don't want to do anything, and that'd be fine. Alright, item number 14, authorization to issue request for proposal for employee compensation study, Mr. Cully.
The last compensation study was performed in 2017. As y'all are aware, there's been massive increase in wages in that time period, especially in the last year. Just recently, the minimum wage went up to $11 and something, and it's caused, caused a significant compression at the bottom of our scale. We had everybody working above minimum wage, but we didn't have some positions that were at the $11 range. So now that's, we have some positions that were at the 11 and something that are only 30% off of the bottom part of our scale, which are the litter tax that y'all, you know, part-time litter tax that we have. So we have some significant issues down there, and I imagine some others as we move up through departments. We did do, you know, public safety last year, but the rest of the staff was all done in 2017. So we would just like to, and it's not to revamp everything. I mean, we, we have our, our grades and those things and position controls that we didn't have previous in the previous study, but we would like to do a comparison to see where things are.
Have we started, just out of curiosity, and then maybe I'm wrong on this, have we, have we started doing, we, we just did the steps for the police and fire, right?
Public safety, correct.
Public safety, we did not do the steps for someone in the treasurer's office?
No, no, they're all, we have a, a minimum mid and max on the rest of our grades. So we have all of our grades, so positions are graded out and in a, a grade. And then with minimum, and, and so that minimum has gone up a couple of times since 17 with whatever cost of livings you have given. Remember, one year you gave 2% cost of living and a 3% merit? So the, the two, the scale went up 2%, the merit didn't affect it. And then I think we've done one other cost of living, 5% maybe, so it's been up 7% since 17, but wages are up.
And inflation is up 11% since 17.
Yeah, just this year, yeah, just about.
So they really haven't gotten a raise?
And this isn't really talking about raises, this is just talking about where, you know, everything, and trying to hire people and retain people. And we, and we'd obviously bring back, this is how far we've gotten out of, out of where we should be with people with years of service. But I, unless somebody looks at that, we really don't know. We just operating off of what we've done since 17.
Mr. Cully, as, as I, you know, you and I talked about it.
Yes, sir.
You know, I don't understand why we can't do our salary study. I don't think it's necessary to spend 50,000. I think we have the capability to, to do a salary study, determine what's best for our employees. And I don't think we should be paying 50,000 to do salaries. There, it needs to be done, but I don't think we need an outside resource.
Who, who did the, the sheriff's one, didn't, didn't, and the fire and rescue, wasn't that in?
We, we performed that in-house. Everybody, that was put together with finance staff, Alan and myself, working on that and, and collecting the data and. I'm not telling you we can't do it, it's a tremendous, tremendous kind of work, right, yeah.
It's going to take some work, but. He's got to, he's got to do the budget first, is that the issue?
Yeah, we were, we.
You've got to do the budget right now.
Well, yeah, we really haven't done a whole lot on budget, because finance is wrapped around the axle and Keystone.
Oh, she's got that covered, don't worry about it.
Yeah, okay, you got that covered? Yeah, she's not going to admit to that yet. So we, we've been, and, and one of my finance staff is the actual project manager on the Keystone, the whole thing, all the way through for treasurer and commissioner and everything. So we, we are sort of busy, trying to get that pulled off, get budget done. I'm not saying we can't do it, so I'm not arguing that issue, but we are, but we do have a big project with Keystone right now.
But you doing the salary study, I mean, or somebody else doing it, it really wouldn't take effect until July 1 or?
We would like to have something for July 1. If we could get it pulled off, that's more of a, you know, whether we can get it turned around. It just started coming up from department heads as they were, as this $11 minimum wage hit that they started going, wait a minute, I've got people now that are, you know, 30 cents away from people that have been here doing a more up-the-scale job.
How, how, how long does it take? I mean, if you had to do it, month, two months?
Maybe, the hardest part about it's getting everybody to give you the data from the other counties. Just because you ask don't mean that you get that back. And then not everybody, you've kind of got to figure out what, some people have the same positions, you know, when you're doing a deputy or something, you know, but, you know, you've got to look at what their administrative people are doing. It's just some.
How, how long does it take?
Alan, what do you think? Couple of months, and it'd probably take a company that same amount of time. I'm not, I don't know we'd get it any faster with a company.
So if you did it, if you started in May after the budget was adopted, you'd be able to get something in July?
Maybe, but I'd like to know before the budget was adopted, but we would probably, if you authorized it, we would start working on it in HR right away, whether finance would have time to put all the numbers together until after budget was over, but we would then be rolling along hopefully in April. Because, you know, we're pretty much finished the budget by the time it goes to public hearing with only just whatever changes that the board wants, so. Yeah, the, getting the data from the adjoining counties is what's the slow part. Some counties are better than others are sharing that data. It's not that they don't want to, but they're all busy to.
Man, you need to. Would, would the, would the board consider when the staff do it and if for July 1 effective date, if that's what they desire to do?
Well, the motion is to get proposals on what it would cost, right? So maybe it wouldn't be that much, meaning it's budget timer, it's a big project to throw at them. But if they say they can do it, they can do it, but I just got busted out with this advisory board, so I'm going to be compliant.
We do it in-house, we do it in-house, at least we can get authorization and do.
I mean, what I was thinking of, if, if it takes you to the end of July, maybe we could retroactively.
We retroactive, I think the 17 one somewhat, because by the time it got adopted, we retroed that one back a ways.
Mr. Cully?
Yes, sir.
Have the schools approached you about a salary study at all? I mean, because I know in Pennsylvania, I think they did a combined one a couple of years ago, where I don't know if there's a cost of savings there, if they, I'm sure they're going to want to do one or.
Yeah, they did one right after we did, so there'll be one, the new ones pretty soon too. I think they did theirs a year after ours, so they probably did one in 18.
Just wondering if there's a, if you did, if, if you did both together, there would be, if there's RFP that you could put out, that would be combined, I'm just to see. I don't, I know it's very different.
We have a meeting, staff meeting with them Mon, Monday, Monday, so we can certainly address that.
Okay. I just was curious.
You're not going to want me to do the schools one in-house, right?
No, 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 absolutely not.
So what did, so what did we decide?
Mr. Cully, what, what would it cost, what did it cost us last time to do the salary study? Just, just guesstimation, you don't have to be exact, but.
I, I think it was around $30,000, but go ahead, Alan.
Well, what I'm, well, what I'm getting is, I mean, I, I think I'm blanking on who the locality was, New Kent, maybe. I don't want to say that was like $70,000, probably much more comprehensive than ours in terms of establishing grades and so forth. But yeah, it, it costs a lot of money. It, I, I was, I was shocked at the cost.
Inflation?
Yeah, inflation. I just think if we can do it, we can save money, that, that piece of money could probably go to our employees rather than, rather, right, rather than spend it, sending it to someone else, if we have the capability to do it.
Well, this, this is just an RFP though, right, so we can kind of, we can decide, we can decide from there if we want to accept it or reject it.
If, if you guys want to do, do an RFP, that's up to the board.
Alan, do you have an RFP that you could send out without doing a lot of work to it, or is it something you've got to sit down and rewrite?
I think you can write out what was taken. I would, yeah, I would look to see if there's a, if we could write on an existing RFP, and I'd look at the, at the New Kent RFP and see if we could modify it to, I'd get a template, I wouldn't write it whole cloth.
Okay. Alright, so then you look at it and then we'll make a decision as to whether we think it's best to do in-house or. All right, so then you you look at it and then you we'll make a decision as to whether we think it's best to do in house or send it out and have it done, that's fair enough.
That's fair, we just needed direction. We didn't want to put out an RFP if you weren't going to, I mean.
Well, you not talk, you know, I have to tell them.
Oh, you sure, yeah.
Is is that the leisure of the board, whatever the board chooses to do then? So do I need a motion for that, Mr. Cully?
Yeah.
So, yes.
I'd just all across, put out the RFP.
Issue a request for proposal for employee compensation study.
Does this include the schools?
We can maybe put a, we can, we might put a clause in there. That would obviously raise the price from what we've quoted you. So we, then we'll talk to them Monday, but we won't get it out between now and next Monday, I doubt.
Right, okay.
If not soon.
So then you, then you, do we want this motion, do we want to wait till you talk to the schools and?
I think if you authorize it, we will, we'll put something together that that works for both, if that's what's the desire of the schools.
Well, I'm not saying it is, they may want to do their own.
They may.
That wasn't, that wasn't my thought, but.
No. You have to find out, we we'll work with them, but I, if you authorize it, we'll get to work on it.
Well, Nancy made the motion, that's why I need to make sure we have directive as to whether we're doing hours or we're going to try to wait and just talk about it. So there's a motion, is there a second? First of all.
I'll second.
All right, so there's a motion, a second, to put out the RFP for our employee compensation study. And you get with them to determine.
If they want to be part of.
Try to do their own or how we go about doing it together.
Correct.
Then you can come back to us two weeks. All right, until there's a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? All right, thank you, Mr. Cully, informational calendar.
We don't really have anything left on the January part of that. The third of February, Thursday, the third of February at 11 is the VACO Local Government Day at the Omni. And I know Mr. Underwood and I are signed up, I don't know. Just the two of us will be going to that. Uh, the next board meeting is 6:00 PM on February Tuesday, February 8. I don't know how you could forget, but February 12 at 10 is the Polar Plunge.
Can't forget.
Or so, probably jump in around noon, so the water will be warm. And then the 21st is President's Day, so those are the things we have on the calendar. Still very much a COVID calendar most of the time, so still not a lot, a lot of things going on. And that's all we have for you right at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Cully, closing board comments, Mr. Forehand.
None, sir.
Mr. Black?
I'm going to defer my comments.
What's that?
I'm deferring.
You're deferring, all right, to the next meeting, all right. Mr. Sealy?
I have none, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Long?
Just to say thank you to staff for hanging in there with us along.
Yes, Mr. Thomas? Who did your answer?
I'm deferring, but I'm still voting no.
You might change your mind. And I have no comments. Motion to adjourn?
So.
Is there a second? Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.